Very good. Welcome to the City of Boulder Planning Board Meeting, everyone. Harmon, you want to start us off and then I'll get the meeting roll slide ready?
Okay, sure. So this is the call to order for the Planning Board Meeting for tonight, Thursday, December 17th, 2020. We do have a quorum and it's just after six. The first order of business before we get into our agenda is for our moderator tonight, Jean Gatzah, to go over the rules and protocols for our virtual meeting. Jane?
Thanks, Harmon. Okay, welcome, everybody. We're glad you're all here. Okay, let me just hit that. Can everybody see my slide?
Yes, there we go.
Okay, great. We're aiming to keep these meetings orderly and respectful, and as such, we have a few items of protocol. So any activities that disrupt, delay, or interfere with the meeting are prohibited. And just as if we were in person, the time for speaking or asking questions is limited. So either I or Harmon, the board chair, will recognize applicants or members of the community to speak and will unmute you. Anyone intending to address the board, if you could please use your full name, and if your full name is not currently displayed, please change it, or you can send it to me in the chat and I'm happy to change it for you. No video will be permitted except for board, staff, and applicants. All others will participate by voice only. Harmon or I or Cindy, if she's the acting host, will enforce these rules by muting or turning the video off for anyone who is violating the rules. So please don't do that. The chat function should only be used for technical issues to communicate with me or Cindy as the host and not for any comments or questions related to the items at hand. And only staff and board members will be allowed to share screens. When we get to the public hearing, I'm going to ask for folks to use the raise hand function to indicate if they'd like to speak either during the open comment or the public hearing. I'll call on folks with raised hands and unmute them. If I don't think we have anybody attending by phone, but if we did and I missed them, if you press star nine, that'll indicate that you have a raised hand. And let's see, with that, I think that's it. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. Okay, so the next order is to go to the minutes, which we have two sets of, which have been provided to us for any changes. And I'm assuming that everyone has sent in the changes that they required. Cindy, thanks for a good work on both of those sets. So I'm going to call for a vote as to the approval of the November 5th, 2020 minutes. Is there anyone who wants to make such a motion?
Oh, move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by John Gerstle. Do I get a second? Can John have one?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gerstle and it's seconded by Lisa Smith, and I'll do a roll call vote. Hold on a minute. Changed to gallery view. Now I can see all of you. All right. So David?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Hi. So we have a five-nothing vote in favor of approval. The minutes are approved for November 5th. Motion for approval of the November 19th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
Thanks, John. Second?
I'll second that one.
Hey, David, we got a motion by Gerstle. It's been seconded by unsigned. The motion is to approve the November 19th, 2020 minutes. Take a roll call vote, David?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Hi. So that passes five to nothing. Next up is our discussion of dispositions, planning board call-ups and continuations. Our first call-up is a land use review. It's for 2020, sorry, 2230 20th Street, Appleton, Walsh, PUD Minor Site Review Amendment to Permit a One-Story 677-Square-Foot Addition to an Existing Single Family Home Within a Two-Lot Planned Unit Development from 1984, PUDP 84-5. The decision may be called up before us, the Planning Board, or before December 18th tomorrow. Is there anybody with any questions? Staff is here to address those or a call-up or a motion, sorry, or nothing. David?
I just was very impressed with the way it appeared in the packet. I thought it was a good collaboration between the applicant and the city. It looks like a very nice plan. So I just wanted to compliment whoever was involved with this, and I certainly don't intend to call it up.
Yeah. Well, that's unusual for a compliment on a call-up, and thank you for pointing that out, David. I thought it was a nice presentation in the packet, too. Looks like Lupita's joined, so we have six members of Planning Board now. And that's all we're going to have for tonight because Sarah's going to be absent. So she is absent. So anyway, anybody with any interest in calling up 2220 20th Street, 2230 20th Street? Okay, then we'll move on to the next call-up. The next call-up is for an Alpine Training Center. It's a land use review or LUR 2020 triple zero 35. Use review for a proposed athletic training facility that caters to athletes focused on skiing, climbing, and mountaineering located at 1840 Commerce Street, Unit G. Indoor recreational or athletic facility uses require a use review in the IG zoning district. This call-up period expires on December 28th, 2020. Are there any questions or comments or a call-up from the board? Okay, thanks. That will not be called up. So we will now jump in. Wait, we-
We missed open comment, Harmon. Sorry about that. I was not looking right at the agenda.
It's okay. It's just a minute. We're slightly out of order. So unless there's a Planning Board member who wants to turn back time, the only thing to do is to start public participation now. So this is the portion of the hearing where if you're a member of the public and you want to address the Planning Board about an issue that is not on the agenda for public hearings tonight, please be welcome to come to our virtual podium and speak for three minutes about such an item. For your information, the public hearing item tonight is a concept plan review for the fire station proposed at 2751 30th Street. And if you want to speak to that, now is not the time. The time will be during public comment for that public hearing. This is general public comment for general public comment items. So we'll turn it over to Jean. Jean, our moderator, will take care of handling public comment for now. Thanks, Jean.
Great. Thanks, Harmon. Okay, looks like we've got two hands up. We've got Lynn Segal and Bea Campbell. So Lynn, you've got three minutes. You can go ahead.
Yoke it out, Kai, folks. Yeah. I kind of had an epiphany this last week at a CU South update meeting, not one of the coffee table things, but the other one. And Frances Draper was there, and she responded to my concern. And this is the basis of my concern. There's 66,000 people in the CU system. There's about half of that many people in the town of Boulder, which is a town of 107,000 people. The other half of that 66,000 people is in Denver and Colorado Springs, which together total 2.8 million and 800,000. And this is just ludicrous to me that we have so many students concentrated in such a small population town. And and this is the source of all of Boulder's problems is housing. Now, what Fran Draper did in response to this comment that I made, which is, "Why are you expanding at CU South? You should be contracting in the City of Boulder." And her response is that this is the flagship campus, and that's very nice. But that doesn't mean everything. It's the first campus. It gets a lot of support, and it's prominently known in the area. But she also said that this is the research campus in the system. Now, what would anyone say to that? I would certainly say not. I would say, you know, that there's probably two-thirds of those students that need to be out of here. And that means the undergrads. They need to be repurposed to the undergrad schools in Denver and in Colorado Springs. If this is the research campus, as Frances Draper said. So number one, that would save you so much trouble of talking and arguing over jobs, housing imbalance, and all the demand for housing and racial equity and the whole situation. And so, oh, thanks, Jean. You were asleep at the wheel, Jean. Bad girl. That's okay. So that's something I'd really like y'all to think about. I mean, it's the elephant in the room. It's like really obvious. But like, why have we been putting up with this since this campus was, you know, brought to us? It was going to be either in Canyon City, you know, there was the prison and the university. And we need to do something about this overpopulation of the students here on this research campus. So, thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, next up is Bea Campbell. Bea, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can. You can go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Bea Campbell, and I work for VS Strategies. VS is a cannabis firm who is a leader in cannabis policy around the country, and we are currently representing a Boulder client, Stella's, who is redeveloping the Walnut Brewery Building at 1123 Walnut Street. Once completed, we are hoping that this building will host two office spaces, a street retail address for regular non-cannabis retail, and Stella's Lounge, which will be tucked on the back of this building. In some ways, Stella's will be an exceptional addition to Boulder restaurant scene and offer authentic Italian cuisine. We have been engaging with the Boulder Cannabis License Advisory Board, CLAB, since the beginning of this year, and we're hopeful that 2021 will bring changes to cannabis policy in the City of Boulder. One of the issues that cannabis stakeholders have been discussing, not only in this board, but also with City Council, touched on the density limits for marijuana businesses licenses in the city. We are hopeful that Boulder will start community conversations about changing zone use and density requirements for cannabis businesses. Additionally, as conversations about new license types such as marijuana hospitality begin to happen, not only across the state but also across the city, we wanted to proactively start engaging with the Planning Board to put this issue on your radar and start hearing your thoughts on it. Marijuana hospitality is a new, highly regulated license type that allows for consumption of cannabis for adults 21 and over in places such as restaurants, coffee shops, yoga studios, and other businesses. Stella's Lounge is hoping to be able to open a restaurant that will serve cannabis instead of alcohol in the first quarter of 2022. We intend to be a positive business role model for Boulder community and help the city grow after COVID recovery plans have been established. We're hopeful that as the new year approaches, we can start having those conversations about changes that need to be made to Title IX of the Boulder Municipal Code to allow for this business to be an additional and something positive to our city. We were told by Boulder City staff that step one in making those changes happening was coming to this board and speaking to you all and putting this issue on the top of your minds. Finally, as one of the top cannabis firms in the country, we just want to make ourselves available to you all. So if you have any questions about cannabis policy in Colorado or in the whole entire country, and we're hoping that in 2021, we can engage in conversations with you all about the changes that need to be made to protect Boulder values, our community, while still allowing for entrepreneurship in new businesses such as hospitality businesses in Boulder. I thank you for your time, for your consideration, and I hope you all have a good night and a Merry Christmas.
Perfect timing. Thanks, Bea. Appreciate that. If anyone else would like to address the board under open comment, please raise hand now. Seeing none, back to you, Harmon.
Thank you. Okay, then we are going to go to our sole public hearing item tonight. And the public hearing for tonight is a concept plan review for the new, a new two-story fire station at 2751 30th Street. The first floor includes an apparatus bay with four drive-through bays and associated support spaces along with fire administration offices and a public community room. The second floor is proposed to house the living spaces for firefighters, 12 bunk rooms and a roof patio. The site includes secure parking for firefighters and public parking for administration staff and public visitors. The site will also include, or also includes, the proposed Bluff Street Extension and rear public alley. Vehicular access to the site will be from the Bluff Street Extension. Fire apparatus will respond to calls from 30th Street. This is reviewed under case number LUR 2020 triple O 43, and I'm going to turn it over to Charles Farrow, our Development Review Manager, to tee this off. Charles?
Great. Thanks so much. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Tonight represents the first step in a really long road to find a home for fire station number three. And I know that our fire department has been searching desperately for a site in this area of town, particularly for a number of reasons for at least two years now. So we're really happy and excited to advance this concept to the board for feedback tonight, and I'm happy to turn it over to Elaine Lockman, who's going to present staff's analysis this evening.
Great. Thank you, Charles. Good evening, everyone. Just to tee this up a little bit further and get us all on the the same page. For concept plan review, the intent or the purpose is really to look at the arrangement of land uses, circulation patterns, architectural characteristics, and environmental preservation. The intent is for comments from members of the public, staff, Planning Board, and council if they decide to call it up, and there is no approval or denial on the application. It's a conversation this evening. So as a brief overview for the discussion, we'll go over the context, including the planning context, which is actually pretty detailed. And then we'll take a look at the built context, a brief summary of the proposed project that the applicant will then provide a little more in-depth information. And then we'll take a look at key issues. So starting with the broad view, the site's part of Boulder Junction that's identified within the comprehensive plan as a neighborhood center. Overall, Boulder Junction's intended to serve functions such as neighborhood gathering, day-to-day needs for residents, workers, and students, and is easily accessible from the surroundings, essentially a 15-minute neighborhood with a mix of uses and a range of services. Boulder Junction redevelopment is based on the Transit Village Area Plan adopted a little over a decade ago to plan the transformation of what had been underutilized industrially zoned land. You can see a lot of car lots and vacant land in the images to the left from about a decade ago. And the intent's been to create a more urban environment with higher density, good place-making pedestrian orientation and a mix of uses, all built around a regional transit facility. So TVAP build-out is in two phases with phase one essentially built out today. We'll go over that a little bit. And what you'll also note is the sites within Phase 2A, which is intended at the completion of Phase 1. It's part of the build-out. TVAP identified various character districts, and in this particular case, it's the 30th Street corridor. It's defined in part as evolving to take the character cues from Steel Yards Project, which is a mixture of commercial and residential, two-to-three stories buildings located along the street with parking behind and supported by a network of streets and alleys. And there was also a circulation plan that was adopted as part of this, essentially to transform what had been really large superblocks in the area. And much of this has already been implemented in that initial phase. And then TVAP, it's important to note specifically indicated that this would be an appropriate location for fire station three somewhere near the Transit Village area. And there's other policies that we can get into with regard to the comp plan about the fire station three. And so it's helpful to take a look at where we are today with the build-out. It's been an incredible process, and build-out's been based on TVAP over time. And so you'll see with Phase 1, starting with the Spark development on the north end, these various pieces have filled in within Phase 1. Just below Spark is the Steel Yards, which was a catalyst site for TVAP, actually, that started in the mid-2000s. And then 30 Pearl neighborhoods across from Depot Square and that regional RTD facility. And then on the south bookend, along with 3,100 Pearl Apartments, is the Rev Neighborhood currently being built out. And so the net conclusion is that Phase 1's essentially built out consistent with TVAP with approximately 1,400 residential units, and that includes about 295 permanently affordable residential units. So really, meeting the intent of that Phase 1. So in terms of land use, as you know, part of the BBCP midterm term update, just recently Planning Board and City Council approved changes to the current land use designations in the area. And those are outlined in black. They include the site and other properties west of 30th. And the change approved was from mixed-use industrial and service commercial to mixed-use business to implement the recommendations of the Transit Village area plan and really intended to facilitate future redevelopment for this Phase 2 way. So the zoning today is BT1, and the fire station is designed essentially to meet most of the BT1 standards. However, as part of the BBCP land use map change, properties in the area may choose to rezone from BT1 to BMS zoning. And it's important to note that staff who had been working on the update recommended allowing rezoning of these properties in the area to occur with redevelopment. So it would avoid any non-conformities of existing development. And a rezoning from BT1 to BMS will not significantly increase development potential, but it's really intended to bring them into consistency with TVAP. The built context reflects the existing zoning, of course, with the service commercial uses aligning Valmont north of the site, and the more urban context in Steel Yards to the east. To the west, there's apartments and offices along with a daycare center to the southeast of the property. And then just adjacent to the south is that former Rob's Music Shop. It's on a site anticipated for redevelopment as permanently affordable residential in the near future. Then the site itself, it's currently vacant. It's most recently been an RV Sales and Repair Center, and there was an auto storage, kind of an overflow lot on the property on the south. The site was part of a site selection process, actually, to determine an appropriate location for the new fire station three. And then it's important to note that that existing fire station three is located a few miles to the south at Arapaho and 30th Street. It's considered a critical facility. And in that regard, it's important that it relocate because it's currently in a flood zone, and it's considered both underutilized and outdated, and it's also considered inefficient. And it's staff's understanding that partial funding for the replacement of the station was included in that 2017 Community Cultural and Safety Tax. And then in terms of the project plans, the applicant's illustrating two options, and both include essentially a two-story structure with offices, training rooms, fitness facilities, kitchen and dining rooms, dayrooms, and bunk rooms, as well as laundry facilities and an outdoor deck. Option one is shown on the right. It's intended as full build-out of the site with approximately 29,000-square-foot building on two levels. Option two is a little bit smaller, about 6,000 square feet, smaller, 23,000 square feet total. The plans include extension of Bluff Street to the west of 30th, and that tees into a planned alley, and that's in accordance with the TVAP circulation plan. And then it's also important to note that planned apparatus bay with four drive-through bays is proposed on the north side of the building, and access to that apparatus bay would be off of Bluff Street Extension. And essentially, it's a one-way circulation so that the fire apparatus doesn't need to back into the site. So it's actually a pretty efficient circulation system. So then in terms of key issue one and consistency with the comp plan policies, the proposed construction of a new fire station meets Policy 1.19 as well as the relevant urban service standards for adequacy of equipment and facilities from the comp plan. And then similarly, the concepts consistent with Policy 8.07 that places emphasis on community well-being and safety to ensure fire protection and emergency services are provided for redeveloping areas such as Boulder Junction. And so, of course, having this new fire station in this context will enhance consistency with the policy. Concept plans also consistent with policies related to land use and urban design and design quality 2.03, 2.24, and 2.25, and the expectation for compact development with connectivity and walkability as the redevelopment of this infill site with a contemporary fire station and implementation of connections that meet the TVAP connections plan, meet these particular policies. And then with regard to Policy 2.40, Design Excellence for Public Projects, and 2.41, Enhanced Design for All Projects. Overall, staff notes that the concept plan meets this policy, and it's also important to note that there's aspects of these policies that will probably require some refinements. And in that regard, staff points to 2.41C. And option one, the full build-out would likely demonstrate a better building relationship to the street since the building's in a more urban configuration pulled towards the street. There's transparency and activity in the window openings. And then in both options, staff encourages the applicant to pull the parking back away from the street, even though it's on the side of the building. The intent would be to diminish the appearance of the parking, and that's also something that is part of the BMS zoning and ensuring that buildings and not parking occupy that front yard space. And then in terms of policies related to land use compatibility, 2.14 and 2.15, a fire station, of course, is considered a great asset to the neighborhood. And as is often the case in traditional Main Street contexts throughout towns and cities in the US, fire stations typically featured prominently. However, staff notes that there are potential impacts that could occur primarily from engine noise and the use of sirens. And one of the neighbors did articulate concerns in one of the emails sent. It's important to note that based on staff's conversations with Boulder Fire, it's understood that there could be specific measures that could be implemented by emergency responders exiting the site whereby the sirens aren't activated until trucks are pointed in the direction of travel. And then it was also explained that it's possible, in some cases, as occurs around town, optic devices that are referred to as Opticom. It's a traffic control system that provides a green light and intersection right-of-way to emergency vehicles could be located at the required traffic signal here at Bluff and 30th that would allow exiting vehicles the right-of-way. And staff understand some of these measures will need to be clarified for neighbors at the time of site review. And then in terms of key issue two and consistency with the TVAP guidelines, there's a number of guidelines that the applications appear to meet, and some of them are dependent on whether or not full build-out occurs. But we'll highlight a few of these, starting at the top. The guideline indicates that orientation of the main facade and the building entrance face the street. And again, this is similar to the- And again, this is similar to the BMS zoning requirements. And as you can see in both options, the entrance may be visible, but it faces that side parking area. There may be a design detail that the applicant would want to revisit in this regard at the time of site review. And then in terms of the guideline for pedestrian scale building design, you can see that the image on the top, if it's fully built out, would be consistent with the guideline as that administration office, that bright red portion of the building is closer to the street, provides that transparency and activity that would then address this guideline. And then the second image down that shows if full belt build out didn't occur, then you'd get more of a large grassy area adjacent to the street. And so obviously landscape considerations would come into play to create that interest if it's option two that's implemented. Then with regard to permeability, and as we noted with regard to the BBCP policies, the plan's consistent with the Connections Plan shown in the upper right with extension of Bluff Street and alley and a sidewalk. Then regarding parking, the guidelines recommend parking be located behind buildings. In this case, it's shown on this side. And as we noted, it's pretty prominent from the street. Staff recommends the applicant maybe take a look at some refinements that would diminish that, perhaps consider a greater parking reduction given the use and perhaps screening opportunities. And then the guidelines also recommend pedestrian interest along the ground level and street furnishings, which will also get fleshed out, of course, in site review. And so with that, it's important to note that public notification was given in the form of written notification. Signs were posted on the property and then public notices were also published in News from City Hall and the Daily Camera website. Two comment letters were received there in your packet in attachment B. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks, Elaine. So I can see everybody. Could you pull the video or the screen share down? Thank you. Does Planning Board have any questions for Elaine? John, you might want to unmute.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that presentation. I was wondering if there's been any consideration given to having a meeting room in that building that would be available to the neighborhood for, for various public meetings. I was thinking perhaps in that red section that is being called an administrative section.
Yeah, that's a cool idea. And I think that's a great question for the applicant. Although I do understand that it's administrative offices for fire administration. So it's not just specific to this particular Fire Station. But again, I'll defer that to the applicant.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer that question if I can.
Yeah, we can do it now or you can just, if this is, was you, William, who just jumped in?
Yeah, I was. Or I can wait until I present here in a little bit.
Yeah, you can just add it into your presentation and we'll try to ask questions that are really questions for staff to answer right now. Okay?
Okay.
All right, great. Anybody have any questions regarding any of the statements and advice in the staff report that was provided to us? John? Oh, wait. John, can I just call, call on David first since he hasn't gone yet? Sorry. David?
Oh, sure. Yes, thank you. And thanks, Elaine. I was just wanting to understand a little bit about the extent of the Bluff Street extension that is a part of this. It, it looks like the Bluff Street extension kind of goes on the south part of this site. And then we're not looking at anything to the west of that at this point. Has that been fully planned out? I think it seems like there's issues to be resolved to get it to eventually go all the way through to Twenty Eighth Street.
Yes, I believe the intent is to allow that to occur when redevelopment occurs. So it's incremental. And in this particular case, it tees into that alley, which again incrementally that alley is intended to ultimately connect to these other connections throughout the western portion of this TVAP.
Okay. And the bilingual school is not in the TVAP boundary, right? They, they had expressed a little concern about that, but it's, that would be to the west of this and it's not in the TVAP boundary. So it would be dealt with outside of TVAP.
Well, it actually is in the area for the TVAP Connections Plan.
It is. Okay.
So at the time of redevelopment, they would need to address the extension of Bluff.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, thanks. I was trying to understand what would make either of the alternatives. Which one would move ahead based on staff or applicant decision making? Is it primarily a financial decision? Or, or is there some other basis for the, for making a decision between those two options?
John, I
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good question for the applicant as well. Anybody else with any questions for staff at this point? Looks like Lupita's searching for the unmute button.
I just have to realign. I've been sitting here for a long, tall day.
Yeah.
Sorry. So I was wondering because of essentially this will be replacing a present location. I, I'd like to see what this new location improves on. Is there, is there a way that from the perspective of the city, what are the biggest highlights of moving to this new location?
Yeah, again, I, that's a great question for the applicant and they're queued up to hopefully answer those questions for you.
Actually, yes, I will be asking that question from them. But I, I would like from the perspective of our, the city, will be able to reach, you know, populations or sections of the city that have not been serviced properly. You know, we will be able to fit better, you know, engines. That's the sort of thing to give from the perspective of the benefits to the city. That's kind of like what I was looking for, if that was something that was easily identified. Because sometimes I think it's useful for our, you know, our residents in the city to see someone like, in, in a succinct way, some of the classes.
Sure. It, it's a great question. And I certainly will defer to our, our, our fire staff that's on the call tonight. But I think the biggest benefit is the fact that we're currently in the event of another flood. We don't have fire service on this side of town if there were a flood rise to be able to traverse, you know, where we would have flooding in town. So I think that's probably the biggest benefit of this location. I think it's why the Fire Department has been searching for so long for a site in this part of town is really to make sure that we have all of our areas of the city's service in the event of a flood.
This is excellent.
And I'm sure that Holder can expand on that as part of their presentation tonight.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Any other questions for staff? All right, then why don't we move it over to the applicant presentation, which I will allow Elaine to, to get set up. And just a reminder, we have generally fifteen minutes for an applicant to make a presentation. So should be a decent amount of time. Elaine?
Yes, I'll, I'll defer now to the applicant. Should be, hopefully you can see that on your screens.
Yeah, hi. My name's Adam Goldstein. I'm a Facilities Project Manager for the city. I just wanted to give a few opening words here before I turn it over to our consultant. Just want to thank, thank everyone for the opportunity tonight. We're very excited about this project, as you've heard, and then to hear some of your thoughts on it. I think staff did a great job covering a lot of the, the issues we're dealing with here. Since we got the land purchase a year ago, we've been working hard on the design you see before you. The station is a critical component, obviously, to the city's public safety. We'll get into it a little bit more, but the existing station is very small, very old, not able to accommodate a lot of the more modern needs of, 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 you know, modern Fire Department. And then, of course, the flood plain issue that was, that was already addressed is a huge one. The new station, in addition to addressing those issues, will advance or fulfill several of the Fire Department's master plan goals, which is, which is very important overall. And then the, the reason for two options, just so you can kind of see it as you're going into it, is we, we fully intend to do the full build out, including admin. However, there is a funding issue and, you know, it may have to be a phased option. And so we wanted to design it so that it could be added later with minimal disruption to the current operations of the Fire Station that would be obviously active at that time. But but the intent is, you know, by the time we go for site review, we'll, we'll have some of those funding issues figured out and we'll, we'll be able to present one or the other. We just wanted to hear some of your thoughts either way, just to help us save time as we're, as we're moving forward. So with that, and we'll get into some of those other questions later, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Will Bussard.
Thanks. Yeah, appreciate it. Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about, maybe answer some of your questions that we had earlier. But yeah, I just kind of wanted to talk about kind of what we presented in the, in the concepts of middle. And I'll try to keep it brief to stay under the time limit, but I appreciate everybody making time tonight. So yeah, it is, as described by Elaine earlier, the two lots on Thirty Street. You can go to the next slide. And one of the things that we were asked to, to identify was what's going on in the site concept map that we saw just a second ago, go back one. And I'm going to have to go faster.
It's not going back. Sorry. Let's see if I can. Bill, you're welcome to turn your video on if you would like.
That says the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Okay. Let me change. Just, I'm just going to scroll through this in presentation mode. It doesn't seem to cooperate much, so I am just gonna go.
Harmon, you were right. Time travel is the theme of today's meeting.
Yeah. Let me just try it again. Yeah. I apologize. I am going to close it out and start over. So if you don't mind. No. For some reason, I am not able to advance or go back.
I can try sharing my screen if that's okay.
That would be great.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
I get it. There we go.
Can you see the, the site context map at this point?
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, just, I don't know where I left off, but this we provided to show what all was around our site, what kind of businesses, other structures, you know, the context of Valmont and Thirty Street, the Goose Creek Pond and Greenway. So I think one of the comments was, please show us the context of your site. So what I did here was showed a lot of what was going on around there with retail. There's a lot of mixed use. There's a little bit of office in the area, but mostly retail and mixed use and some some residential as well. This diagram also shows kind of where the sun, sun path is, your views to the mountains, the Flatiron Views, et cetera. Moving along to the next one, this is a parcel map that we've already seen, so I'll kind of skim over that. But one thing that does show is the existing property line in red. And you'll see on the next, on some slides in the future, where we're going to have to move that in relation to TVAP. So one of the things that we thought would show was an original planning diagram before we got into it a little bit further. We did about fifteen of these. This one's kind of where we landed because of where the Apparatus Bay exited on the Thirty Street. Like Elaine says, it's a, it's a one-way in and out for the apparatus to not congest traffic and also give a, a unique entry into the admin and visitor area. See here, this is the TVAP road section that we were asked to, you know, comply with, which is great. It really makes the, the street wider, but it's also lends itself as far as greenery and pedestrian scale connectivity. So that is on these plans, which I'll show you now. And this is the option one, full build out with the admin. I think Adam said something about that. And there was a question earlier about community and training, so I'll get into that shortly. But this just kind of shows the yellow line would be where our new property line would have to be in relation to the widening of Thirty Street. So we ended up having to push everything, you know, squeeze everything onto the site a little bit tighter. And, you know, we reduced parking as much as we could, but we also had to make it usable. So we worked with the, with the Fire Department on exactly what their needs would be for the site with admin and the firefighters and visitors. And that's where we ended up with the parking being maxed out essentially. This, this site is kind of small for all the parking that you would have to have. So anyway, the administration was requested to be visible off of Thirty Street, which is the red box that was referred to earlier, this area right here, if you guys can see my cursor. The entry to the parking would be off of Bluff Street. I think that was for two reasons we ended up with that. Because we didn't want Thirty Street to be backed up if there was a shift change all at once or a public meeting happening. Everybody could get off of Bluff Street and you'd have area to back up in, in, or on Bluff Street. So let's see, the Apparatus Bay location made the most sense here as well because we didn't want, we had this plan flipped at one point vertically where the Apparatus Bay was down here. So you would enter off Thirty and come around and out, but with the intersection, that didn't make much sense. So we flipped it and it made a little bit more seamless entry and exit for the Apparatus Bay. We will have to cut the median in this location so they can make left turns. But we felt like keeping as far away from this intersection made a little bit more sense in case this intersection was a little bit backed up. And they talked a little bit about the, the, the possible signaling in this location too. So that's something we'll have to work out as we get further down the road. Like I said, the community room is located in what we're calling the administration area. There's the lobby, there, there's the admin, and then there's fitness and then restrooms that serve the admin and the community. So what we were trying to do was separate the Fire Station itself and all of its employees from the admin and the public. And with this, with this plan that we ended up with, it works really well with allowing folks who are using the community room to use these restrooms. And it also separates the two after hours and during regular working hours. So people can't just wander in. Let's see here. And the second floor on this plan shows you where these bunk rooms are located up on the second level and the day room and the kitchen and the dining. There's a couple of offices. One thing that the Fire Department wanted to make sure we accomplished, which we had a hard time with, but we finally got it, was a straight shot from all of the bunk rooms Was a straight shot from all of the bunk rooms in the apparatus bay. In doing this plan, we have a long, straight hallway that leads directly to a stair and a slide. And there's also, you know, exiting requirements for a level two. So there's actually a stair over here. For the hose dry that would accommodate the folks who are in the kitchen and day room as well, and the roof patio, and then. The diagonals for this plan required us to have another stair at this corner as well. So. The other thing about the second level that we really like and finally worked out for us was. Keeping these bunk rooms off, or as far, far away from 30th Street as we could because of the noise. The folks who are sleeping in here have odd hours, to say the least, and they need sleep during the day. And at night, just all times of the day. So keeping us away from 30th Street. With a buffer of distance sure helps, and that's why we ended up situating on the backside. Also. Putting bunk rooms on a second level, especially in an urban setting like this, is very important for safety. There's a lot of times when. You know, people off the street will wander into a building. And, you know, whenever you're firefighter or police or anything like that, you want to make sure you keep your employees safe, especially. Where they live, which is what this level is. So keeping up there on second, on the second level made the most sense. And like I said earlier, there's some work area, offices, the B C suite is up there as well. But also this roof patio is also kind of cool because you, out here, it won't be completely roof patio. A lot of it will be roof garden and things like that, because you can't have too much space up there. But the views from here to the flatirons and into the south and even off to the east are, are great. Also. If we had this on the ground level, there would be the chance that people would wander in there. And either try to sleep or disturb the firefighters and whoever else is using that from the, the fire station. Let's see here, this small plan shows the roof plan. One of the things we're trying to achieve with this building. Is as much roof area as possible for photovoltaic panels. To help offset our energy use. So. We maximize the roof as much as we possibly could to maximize all this PV up here. There's some areas that we'll have to have rooftop units and things like that and an elevator overrun, of course, but. Over the roof patio, we cut a hole in it, so the sunlight would be able to get to the, the roof patio. First of all, just for the people who are hanging out up there, but also for all the plantings that we, we planned to put up on that level. Let's see here. This is a concept sketch diagram of the station. We started out, you know, kind of in the planning phase, trying to make sure everything worked together on such a tight site. But having interesting architecture was one of the things that they asked us to do. And transparency views from the street and also screening of the, of the parking. So I know that one of the comments was. The parking is visible from the street, yes. Agreed, but these areas up along 30th Street are a great opportunity for us to screen some of that parking. And that's the plan in those areas with, with some rain gardens and things like that. In this plan, you'll see. Adam was talking about the admin just essentially being removed. There'd be a small patio out here. For folks who are visiting the community room, but otherwise it's really reserved space for phase two. If, if we have to go that route, hopefully we don't, but you never know. I'll move on to a few of the views that we've created of the station. This one's from 30th Street. Looking across the street towards the station. One of the things that we tried to do that I believe was brought up was use pedestrian scale materials. So whenever we designed this, we thought brick with some cool brick details. Some eyebrows over the, the apparatus bay doors, some wood, smaller. Shingled. Metal panels, some eyebrows to create some shading into the admin area as well. Plus you'll see the tree lawn right here and plenty of. Streetscaping. As much as we can get away with, for sure. One of the things as well was having an obvious entry. As you can see in the plan, the parking is obviously up front, what we would call the front of the admin area. And once you see. Let's see the next slide. You'll see how obvious that, that entry is. Plus it's got great connectivity to 30th Street. And also from Bluff as well. So walkability, connectivity, safety, having an obvious entry. And also keeping it really inviting were, were very important. So. Next view is kind of looking across from 30th as well. You can kind of see the wood and the, the, the glass and. Breaking down those facades, so it's not so monolithic. Phase two, I'll run through this one quickly. I don't know where I am on time. But this is the same, same thing. It keeps all of the elements. The only thing it took away was the admin portion. Like I said, hopefully we don't have to do that, but we do have a good plan for it. One of the comments was windows and no blank walls. So. On, in these areas on the plan. These are essentially the, the lobby and restroom. So if need be. If we do a phased approach, we could add windows along this wall for sure. These are mechanical rooms. Storage and electrical rooms. So adding green screen along those. Walls was kind of our approach. You can kind of see them in this, this rendering right here. To break up that facade. And if there's other ways to do it, we can figure that out too. Just having windows on that facade was a little tougher. But, but putting them in this area might be a little bit easier if we have to do that phased. Construction approach. So.
William.
Five minutes? Okay, well, I, I think I'm essentially done. I just wanted to, to kind of leave you with some of these images, but. Also, I think the feedback we got was really good and we have some, some responses to that in the future. So. Is Adam, is there anything else you want to say in my last fifteen seconds?
I just, I just wanted to clarify the question on the community room. It would be a part of the base scope, option, both options, I should say. So while it's located near admin, it's not tied to the admin. Component. So it would be there regardless. Admin would use it as a training room, you know, when it's not used by the community, that sort of thing. So it would serve double duty, but it, it is in there.
Thank you.
Perfect timing. There you go.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that presentation. If you can pull your screen down for now, at least we'd appreciate it. So I, I just have a quick question. This is our time as planning board to ask questions of the applicant before we turn it over to. The public comment section of the public hearing. And I just wanted to mention that when we heard the fire chief present the master plan for the fire department to. Planning board, one of the things that he talked about was the old fire. Fire stations being meant for a group for firemen, firemen. And so there were no separate dormitories. And I couldn't see from the size of the, the plans whether. There are bunks that are specifically bunk rooms that are specifically geared towards different genders or if it's mixed up. Could you just talk to that?
Yep, absolutely. When we were approached with this project, one of their. Requirements was essentially a gender neutral facility. So. All the bunk rooms are designed with a, a shared bathroom. So two bunk rooms are served by one. Restroom and shower and all that stuff. And then any, you know, single restrooms that serve things like. The day room, those are gender neutral as well. Maybe Holger can answer that a little bit too.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. And you're absolutely correct. One of our master plan goals that is going to be addressed by this is. Our gender diversity goals. And as Adam mentioned, everything in this facility is gender neutral. That's an industry standard at this point. Because based on our flexible staffing, you never know how many females you're gonna have on duty, how many males you're gonna have on duty and really. You know, equity and gender issues could be on that as we're well aware. So this facility. More than meets those needs and I'm happy that we were able to.
Thanks. Does anybody else on the board have questions for the project team? John?
Yeah, can you just tell us how big that community room is planned to be and how many folks could be in there at, at one time?
I think it's planned to fit thirty people.
Thank you.
David?
Sorry about that. I, I know that. We probably don't know all the answers to if, if, if it were a phase one, phase two scenario. But do you have a feel for, you know, the kinds of. Timeframes that would be between phases if it did go to, to phase? Or is that something you would know more about at site review timeframe?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. And that's something we, we would like to know too. I, I think that. What it would probably be is, is another tax, right? We're looking at probably an extension of CCS to do. Any of this project. And then it may be another one, depending on how, you know, how they choose to approach that. So. That's really what it would be. So I, I don't know, three, five years is, is what we're counting on.
Okay, thank you.
Last chance for planning board questions?
Did we adequately address your question regarding the impacts on the fire service to the city? I believe there was a question about that earlier.
Yes, I heard of, but if you want to add to it, that would be great.
I really, one thing that we wanted to mention here is that there has been an increase in call volume in the 30th and Valmont area. And so from a fire service perspective, it does help us with that quite a bit. The other component is numerous master goals on the master plan that we presented to you last year. Are being met by that to include the gender diversity goals that we talked about, some of the climate efficiency goals. Our advanced life support programming that we're anticipating on ramping up over the next three to five years. So facility and its location is actually quite optimal. Despite some of the constraints that were referenced earlier regarding finding a suitable site. So.
Great, thank you. Peter?
Hi there. Thank you. Great presentation. You just brought something up that I remember discussing. A year or two ago, I guess, the move towards the advanced life. Support or safety. How has that gone and, and how? Will this project fit into that? You mentioned that it will, but if you have a quick example. I think that would be a nice way to tie this back to that. Fairly lively conversation we had.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we were in front of you last December to present to your master plan. Subsequently in February, February eighteenth, we presented to city council and the plan was accepted at your recommendation. Obviously, we all know what happened soon after that. And we, you know, shifted a little bit into defense mode in terms of department operations. But I would say actually the current crisis also highlights some of the reasons why we want to, you know. Play an expanded role in advanced life support. This facility in specifically, you probably saw has. Sleeping for twelve and pull-through bays for four. Apparatus base. And the reason for that is, is we're looking at going to lighter vehicles. Those include quick response vehicles. That paramedics would be positioned on as opposed to our AMT basics right now. But also transport ambulances that would be housed out of this facility. Our entire capital construction portfolio across the fire department is currently undersized. We really have no station that currently doesn't have some type of a challenge. And adding advanced life support components does require that additional capital infrastructure. This station is going to be our first major effort to be able to include those different vehicle types and those different, different service levels. A really kind of a finer point to, to address the community room issues as well. One of the things we're trying to do along with that advanced life support is to start getting into service areas such as. Preventative care, for instance, blood pressure clinics, things of that nature. That community room also provides us a space. To bring the community into our station. Really, at no other station do we have that capability right now, because we would have to intermingle. A public space with a space currently used for fire department firefighting operations. So. Those are some examples of how we're able to address that.
Thank you.
Last question? All right, Gene, if you want to take it away, we're, we're gonna go to public comment here. And members of the public have three minutes to provide input on this matter.
Okay, thanks, Harmon. And again, if folks would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. So far we, I see one. Lynn Segal, if anyone else would like to, to speak, please raise hand now. And Lynn, you can go ahead.
I know this is none of your business, but these virtual meetings have got to be fixed. I don't know who else is at this meeting. For all I know, I'm the only one. You can't see me. This is utterly ridiculous after ten months. I don't know how many people are here. I don't know who's here. What is this? Am I to be blindfolded? Is this what you want for your community? And it's not all about city council. It's about planning board telling city council that there's a problem here. You are.
Any comment? Lynn, I'm gonna interrupt you for a second. Do you have any comment that's relevant to this meeting?
Yes, I do. And part of it.
Can you leave it to that, please?
Yeah, that's what this is about. This is called communication, Harmon. Communication.
Let's communicate or. And to the applicant, please.
Harmon, I have my lousy three minutes. You have hours and hours. Leave me alone on my three minutes. Do I have to treat you like Sam? Okay, now.
I don't know how you treat Sam Lynn, but this is for public comment about the hearing item.
Form of communication allowed to me into this meeting. This is inappropriate. I don't know who's at this meeting. There might be nobody at this meeting. There could be five hundred people at this meeting. Why can't I know that? That's your responsibility to tell city council that you're getting complaints from planning board. Now, is there six foot between the sleeping areas in this thing? Because we don't have any guarantee that this virus is just gonna be over and done with in decades. We do not, unless some, one of you has some plan here. That you know that this virus, that the vaccines are gonna be fine, that we aren't gonna need too many vaccines, like, you know. Follow-ups, because it only lasts so long that certain age groups it doesn't work with. So we need to design all our facilities to be COVID nineteen. Fixed, you know, or adaptive. Let's see. Oh, the architecture, I don't like the Vs and the As. Sorry, but I'm picky about my architecture. And i- if you don't know what I mean, big, large A-frame type things. I like that there's good awnings and overhangs. There could be easily three people per bath. And you just have to clean completely, you know. For COVID, but you can still do three people to a bath. That's too much luxury of two people per bath. Let's see. There are eight stations in the Boulder area. I would have really liked to have seen as, as a member of the public. Why can't I see a map of all the fire stations in the city of Boulder that's real clear, crystal clear to me? I had to look up each one while I was trying to watch your presentation. And we've got them all around, but we don't have any on the mountain backdrop. Whereas, as Elaine had given away, helped give away. Our original fire station that was at Fourth and Maxwell, that's where we need a station. I know we've got one at Thirteenth and Cedar, but we need one right on the mountain backdrop with all the development that's going up around Boulder on the perimeter. We need fire station there, because when this fire comes in, it's gonna sweep through and it's gonna take out. We need more perimeter protection. Then, then central and especially in that backdrop of Sinitas. Because that's where the fuel is and it's gonna come in rude from there. And with all the built environment, it's just like the flood in South Boulder Creek. We built there, unfortunately, we didn't. We built there, unfortunately, we didn't know-
Lynn, we need you to wrap it up. You're over time.
Yeah, so we, well, we're built, we ridiculously built up heavily at 311 and we need fire suppression up there. The original fire, fire station was there for a reason at Fourth and Maxwell, and we need to have some space there for fire.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Do we have any other members of the public signed up?
I see no other hands. We have three attendees. And if anyone else would like to, please, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, and if nobody signs up, you know, generally, under our public meeting rules, if you have 15 minutes as an applicant, you have three minutes for rebuttal. You don't have to use the time, but for the project team, if you have any response to any of the comments you heard, now would be your time to make that, that response. And I know Lynn asked a question about COVID safety, so if there are any thoughts to that, you may take additional time or you don't have to.
I'll just say a quick bit about fresh air. One of the things about this station is that we have to design for some pretty stringent code standards and environmental standards and indoor air quality standards. So we've, we definitely take everything under consideration to keep, to keep folks in our buildings healthy. So that's all I'll say about that.
I can address a little bit on the fire department standpoint. We've been obviously pretty in-depth involved in ensuring employee safety. And even in our existing stations, we're happy to report that we've not had any firefighter-to-firefighter transmissions in our current stations, and this station will help us, as Adam pointed out, with much better industrial hygiene standards, ensuring that as well.
Great. Anything else from the project team? All right. Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing right now. And we're going to turn it back to the planning board. And we're going to talk about the key issues that have been presented to us in the concept plan discussion by staff. And the first key issue is, does the project on balance preliminarily meet the relevant policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? Any person may jump in from planning board. Okay, seeing nobody jumping in, I will turn it the other way. Is there anybody who believes that the project on balance does not meet the relevant policies of the comprehensive plan? Okay, so the planning board believes that the project on the balance meets the relevant policies of the comp plan. Does anybody want to make any general comments related to this first key issue? David?
Yeah, I definitely really appreciate that the, even though this was not a mandatory step, that the applicants feel that planning board's input is useful. So I did want to take the time to make some general comments on both the key issues. So thank you, Harmon, for the team matter. I do think that, you know, when we talk about key issue one, policy 1.19, we don't often see that many proposals for public safety. So it's, you know, very, very, obviously very important that we have good plans for fire safety. So I think that that is probably the most important comp plan policy that is well addressed by this. And of course, we do need to find a new location since the Arapahoe location is in the flood zone. Let's see, lots of, I think that it's a good location. I think that it is a good match in the zoning. And there was a lot of due diligence to make sure that, that it is. There are concerns around siren noise, of course, and so people who live near the corridor will, will have to deal with that a little bit. But of course, people who live along any major corridors hear sirens and it's part of life. So if that can be mitigated somewhat, I'd like to see that, but, but definitely, it's nice to see that that's being thought about at this point. The concern, concerns about phasing with street activation, street activation is a comp plan principle. So it, you know, five years would be a reasonable amount of time. So I can see how if it were going to be at site review, five years, it would be nice to see, see some of that addressed. And let's see what other things. Oh, certainly, the, the path, the path to the north, actually, that's maybe a little bit of a question. The path to north was referenced as a sidewalk in many cases. But depending on whether Bluff Street is a good bike route between 30th and 28th, that path to the north might provide a nice, safe alternative to taking a street for bike and pedestrians. So it's good to see some, some circulation, some east-west circulation planned there. So those are some of the thoughts I had. I'll let other people chime in.
Yeah, thanks for that, David. I saw John's hand go up after yours. Try to unmute John.
Thanks. I, I think this is a nice proposal that you've made, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And I especially appreciate the community, the provision of a community room because I think it'll be good for the fire department and also for, for the neighborhood at large if there's a place like that that's available. I have, I'm a, I'm a bit unclear about what happens with Bluff Street because the drawings that I see in the, that we've been provided tonight look like Bluff sort of makes a kink to the south before it continues to the west at, at some future time. And I'm unclear about how, whether that is actually what is intended or, and how desirable that is from a, from a street layout. But other than that, I, I have no criticisms.
Peter?
If this is the right time to talk about the siren noise and the mitigation attempts of the, what is it? Specific measures like we implemented exiting the site whereby sirens aren't activated and that the trucks are pointed in the direction of travel, is that a, if that is something that is definite and is already in place and in use in other stations, that's meaningful. If it's a nice to have, we'll try and do it later, that is less meaningful. But otherwise, I find it to be compatible. And it'd be nice to see that part of 30th, see some development.
I could speak to the noise mitigation if you'd like.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing about that.
So we have a station that has somewhat similar profile in terms of exiting and entry on Darley and Broadway, Station 4. That also has a opticom device that is very similar to the one that we're proposing for the Bluff Street location. And it's located in a residential neighborhood, obviously, enveloped almost completely by residential homes. Similar concerns were brought up, as far as I understand. As that, a location was looked at as a fire department. I'll admit that that was long before my time, even in the fire service, because that fire station is fairly old. However, we have not received any active complaints. We use that traffic mitigation signal quite actively. And normally, particularly at night, we don't activate our sirens if there's no need to clear traffic, which obviously traffic patterns at night are a lot less. And so those are some things, I think, to consider, but we would actively want to see a similar opticom device, not only for noise mitigation, but also for our ability to effectively enter 30th Street for quick emergency response.
Thank you.
David, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, if, if someone else had something that hasn't spoken yet, I'd be willing to defer. But otherwise, I just wanted to interject that I, I think that the Flatiron's views from this location are just amazing. So if, I thought it might be interesting to look at whether there might be some opportunity to just have a little bit more for the, for the firefighters and any other staff in terms of amenities that might be outdoors from the site that would face that view just because it's such an incredible spot. So when I look at the west elevation, I don't necessarily see, I see beautiful windows and stuff, but I just think it might be interesting as you move towards site review to see if there's any, any way that you could take advantage of that with a little outdoor patio or, or something.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, David. I, you know, I have to say that in terms of the meeting of the policy around enhanced design, I think it's great. You know, the, the idea of having that, I think if you had that phased plan with the roof going in first and having that big hole in the roof on the southeast corner and then eventually putting the administration piece under, the red box underneath it and having that kind of provide some shade and some sun for area above that, for outdoor space. You know, it's just, it's a neat design. I like the color. It looks really good. As far as safety is concerned, I think moving the equipment bays to the north side so that you have trucks pulling out further away from the intersection was a smart move. I'm sure you thought of that. And, you know, generally, I think, you know, I agree with most of Steph's comments and, and I think they should be paid attention to, but I'm not 100% concerned about the relocation or diminishment of the amount of parking that's available. I think you need to make sure that staff can get there and park. And, and, you know, most firefighters unfortunately don't live in our community anymore because of the cost of living. And, and I don't know, you know, how shifts work and where people live when they're not living in the station. But I'm assuming that, you know, you're, you want your staff to be able to make it there. And, and so I'll trust you to provide a parking plan that works as best you can to accommodate that need and also meet our parking goals in the city. Other thoughts from planning board members around this first key item, or should we move on? All right, key item number two, which is specific to the TVAP. So is the, is the proposed project, and I'm going to turn it around right away, inconsistent with the TVAP, the Transit Village Area Plan and Design Guidelines? Is there anybody who finds the project to be inconsistent and fails to meet the TVAP guidelines? Okay, so planning board feels that this project, as proposed here at Concept Review at least, meets the TVAP guidelines. So now, are there any general comments or, or specific TVAP guidelines that people want to reference or provide advice on to the project team? Now's your chance. David?
Sure. Well, I had a few things that I put under this key issue. I don't know if they could have been talked about before, but I thought I would just point out that there were some references to minor setback variances that may be needed for this project. And I, I think that's, given this location, I don't see any concerns about that. There's a space to work with. And if there was a need to have a setback variance, there's a lot of, a lot of wiggle room around this in other areas. So, so I didn't see that as a concern. So I thought I would just go ahead and say that at this point so that that can be used as you go towards site review. Let's see, there, the primary entrance on the front or on the side, I think that it would be interesting to see if there could be a little more done to, I see why there would be a primary entrance face to the south, but maybe there could be something to make it just a little bit more obvious to someone who might be approaching pedestrian-wise from the, from 30th that would have a kind of a more gracious walkway to that entry that would make it sort of similar to a, to a main entrance. So just, there could be something sort of clever done with signage and, and walkways that could do that. And yeah, I'll just, and I put my parking analysis comment on here. I agree with Harmon that it's not critical, but if there is a chance to move some parking to the back, that would, that would be nice.
Okay, as we look at the TVAP guidelines, which are in your packet, starting on page 24, do any, any, does anything pop up for any other planning board member? Okay, is it fair to say that the planning board supports the staff analysis in the packet? Okay, so a lot of thumbs up and nodding. So, you know, I, I think just as a sort of a general comment, you know, and I've already said, I really like the design and I think it's, it's neat in phase one and it stays, gets even neater in phase two. I support David's concept of providing the pedestrians who are coming for the community purpose a more obvious entrance. Because, you know, with the machines going in and out, the equipment going in and out of the bays and stuff, I think fire stations to almost anybody except five-year-old kids who are enamored with firefighting, they can be sort of intimidating places. And so opening it up to, to the public, if, if, you know, that's the intent with the community room, it would help to show that way a little bit more clearly. You know, I'm all for density in the TVAP, but I think one of the neat things about this fire station is that it's a relief to the density of the TVAP where we're seeing a lot of, you know, pretty tall for Boulder at least, and dense buildings. And so, you know, the, the way that this site allows for some transparency and some views out to the mountains is a, is a cool feature just by design. And I support the staff's recommendations and their consistency analysis as well with those additional comments. So are there any other planning board members who want to speak to this matter, or shall we? John? Don't forget to unmute John.
I just want to congratulate the, the architect on an attractive design. I think this is imaginative and attractive, so just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I will throw that.
Great. Can I get a fourth? Just kidding. Okay, so, so I know it's been the, the, generally, the policy of the board chair to go back over all of the comments that, that planning board has made and try to reiterate them in one place for the applicant. But, you know, it's been a relatively short public meeting, and I think we've mostly agreed with what's in the packet. So I'm going to leave it at that and give the applicant one more opportunity to say anything that they wanted to get out to planning board or any responses to some of the additional advice that we provided. No, I, I'll, I'll speak for the team. I am very appreciative of the comments. We really wanted to get this in front of you and the public as soon as we could just so that we could make sure we were on the right track. And, and it looks like we are. And once again, just thank you very much. And we will see you as soon as we can at site review. Great. Well, thanks. Thanks, chief. Thanks, everybody, for a great presentation and look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
Okay, Elaine? Elaine, oh, you just waved. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the, that public hearing agenda item, and we're going to jump to matters from the planning board, planning director and city attorney. We have two on the agenda tonight. One, I'm told, is not going to include a presentation. That's the first one, which is an information item for the Park, Parks and Rec Master Plan Update. And I've been instructed to let everyone know that if you have any questions, you can submit them by email. If there is anybody who wants to speak about this during matters right now, you know, we may be able to get a little bit of guidance from staff. So I'm just going to turn it over to Charles and see if he has anything to add and, and let us know who to email. But otherwise, I don't anticipate we're going to do much with this item. Go ahead, Charles.
Yeah, nothing from staff. Thanks very much, Harmon. Chris Rangelos is the planner supporting this work. His contact information is at the end of the memo. So if you have any thoughts, questions, he'd be happy to help. You can contact him directly.
Okay, if there are no questions right now around that, then I'll move to the next matter from the planning board, which is our letter to city council. And the way that I want this to operate is, you know, we had some additional work done in a second draft of- And the way that I want this to operate is um, you know, we had some additional work done in a second draft of the letter. Uh, provided by Lisa and Peter. It's in a pack. It's in our packet. And tonight we're going to finish the letter in real time. And Lupita is going to be the editor in chief and share her screen. And so to the extent that people have any comments, um, let me turn it over to Lupita to accept those comments and. Uh, take care of uh, the on-screen editing for um, for finalizing our twenty twenty-one letter to city council. Lupita?
Yes, and I was trying to do the screen sharing, but apparently my. Host disabled my participant's screen sharing, so maybe.
You forgot to bring the host cookies again.
Let's see.
You're a co-host now.
Try now, sorry about that. I thought I had it.
Yeah, well, we tried this earlier and it worked just fine, so don't worry about it.
Great.
Okay, so everybody can see it and I hope it's a good size font for everybody.
Looks great.
Okay, Lupita, you're in charge.
Okay, so um, first I'd like to ask if there is um, a. Length that you were considering, because right now we're sitting at. A little bit over a page and a half and um, I think that when I read it, it all make, you know, very nice sense. Um, if what we wanted to, you know, shorten it. We can go step by step and see what we can do to the sentences of the sections.
The requirement is two pages.
Okay, so we are within the, great, yeah, and so. Starting, sorry if I keep moving this stuff and I don't want to give anybody a headache. That's not my intention. So I I know because I complain about things like that myself. Um, so. Would you guys like to just kind of go through the reading? Um, should we do it out loud and? Identify any places where we might still want to do a little bit more more worth smoothing?
I think that sounds good, Lupita. Just kind of go through section by section. I don't know if we necessarily need to. Read every section, but maybe that's good because I know I read my own work back to myself to see how it flows and.
Yeah, I think that's that's kind of like the first step. You want to see that things flow and. When I read it, it it looked good to me already, so it's it's nice. Um, at most, I will say just maybe. So saying some things, but most of the stuff reads really well. Okay, so what recent decision? So let's look at question one. What recent decision change of to code or planning trend? Do you see as particularly positive and would like to build on, so um, their bullet. Answers are, you know, in two different sections, equity and innovation, which is basically what the theme has been. For all three questions, which I think is a is a nice way to make things uh. Sort of match. So that it is clear uh, where are um. More focused lies, right? So obviously equity and innovation are things that run through all three questions.
So um, I'll offer you, you actually. Sort of made an edit on the fly as you were reading, um, and I'm not sure if it's something we want to implement or not. Um, but in question one, uh, you said would like to build on instead of build upon. Um, and I know it's minor, but personally I think built on is a a little simpler, but if somebody really likes that verbiage, I'm also fine with it as it is.
Any comments about that?
Negative poll. Does anyone mind changing it from pond on? I can't see everyone, so you may need to unmute.
Oh.
One thing you can do, Lisa, is you can grab the bar that's between the screen share and the people in the gallery view and move it to the left.
Yeah, then I can see more, but I'm on a laptop. Um, so I'm, I still, I mean, I I can move back and forth to see John and Peter.
There you go.
Okay, then I'm gonna just recommend that we make it on instead of upon.
And I'm just in general, I was um impressed with some of the uh. Trimming down that you you two did over the week or a couple of weeks, I I um, I kind of.
Very scum.
Yeah, and you moved a couple of things from equity to innovation. I thought that made sense, so.
And Lisa just got rid of two more letters right there.
These letters, they're gonna break the bank.
Yeah. Well, one of the, one of the things that I usually do is when I have things like ASAP acknowledging. I I I like to just make it straight present tense. So planning board is pleased that the city. Acknowledges social right racial, gender and economic discrimination. That's one of the things that I. Because if we feel feel very strongly, then we can just kind of come out and say. I think that that sort of thing, it makes, at least from my perspective, um, make things um. A little more forceful.
Yeah, I think in general move out of passive voice when you find it.
Yeah.
Um.
I agree with that too.
I also, I tried to catch them all Lupita, but I didn't end up doing a finder replace. I forgot to. Um, there were quite a few double spaces after periods. Um, I deleted them whenever I found them, but at some point you may want to do a finder replace for double spaces for.
All right, I will do that.
Yeah, and that's my fault.
It took me so long to break that habit. So long. I still do finer replaces on my own work.
I would suggest that.
Please that the city acknowledges social, racial, gender and economic discrimination. And economic discrimination and inequity. Usually when you have long list like this, you put a comma before the lap, the and.
I'm I'm gonna push back on the Oxford comma.
On this one because of the other and?
Yeah, well, I own, so it depends on what style we're writing in. So if everybody else really likes Oxford commas, we can have them. Um, but generally you wouldn't put them in with AP style or most other publication styles, including Oxford is now telling us not to. Um, however, if somebody thinks that it's confusing without the comma, that would be the one reason to put it in.
That will be for me the reason, just because you have two ends next to it, so close to each other.
And then you just do my track and you just swap out racial and gender and economic and there you go. You just reverse them, so you don't have the and, you don't have the penultimate.
So could you repeat that, Peter, how you would rewrite?
The penultimate uh, item it involves an and, so I would just. Make it social, gender and economic discrimination, racial and equity and inequity. To avoid the confusion and to get us off of the Oxford comma discussion.
I I'm an Oxford comma guy, but I actually think this one reads better without it because. I think gender, I think discrimination and inequity. Are the issues and the kinds of discrimination and inequity. That we're talking about are social, ratio, racial, gender and economic.
Okay, so so then if, because I think if we interpret it that way, then I would, I would be very comfortable because the idea is that. We're talking about both discrimination and inequity and those different terms, the gender, racial, gender and economic. That's. They kind of think that, um, I think it becomes clear just when you speak about it. So I will be fine with that.
Can I ask um? If I I think we need to remove the uh hyphen between land and use. Um, and just do word search for land dash use and just replace with land use with a space.
Where is this?
It's in a few places and then there there's at least one land use that doesn't have the dash, so.
Like down here?
Yeah, really, we don't use, that's kind of a. Like a British thing from the fifties and in in the United States today, we just say land use with a space.
All right, well, we can do the search for line use. And they will show where it is.
You could also do a finder replace if you want Lupita.
Ah. You're correct, I could do that. Oh, here's another one. Now this one is capitalized. What do you guys see about that?
Yeah.
Get rid of the capitalization.
Get rid of the capitalization? And I think that takes care of it, but uh, we can go back and then. That's at the end of the document. Good, good point, Harmon.
Here's one there. Where to go? There, under innovation, the first bullet. After boulders.
Oh, yeah.
All right, great. And um. So. And on the second bullet or third bullet here in the equity, this one part what I was thinking here. Affordable housing projects have been moving forward with both hundred percent affordable projects and projects with a percentage. Of onsite permanent affordability coming to the board. Something like that, I I will just change to something like with both total or partial affordability, something like that, just kind of a. Um, give the sense that they're all welcome, so to speak. Cause I I unless it's like a completely different kind of criteria for the. Percentage of onsite permanent affordability. Is it because hundred percent affordable means they're not going to have a permanent affordable? Versus the other ones who are, or are they both kind of the same criteria, only that some of them are. A hundred percent versus other ones where only part of them are. Does that make sense?
For, I guess, for me, the um. What the the drafters, I think we're trying to say is that we're seeing hundred percent affordable projects and forty, fifty percent, you know, affordable projects. Um, and maybe that's just too specific. Maybe we're, you know, we're just seeing a lot of the projects that. Are affordable housing projects and that's enough.
And so that's why I say, you know, with with a range of affordable, you know. You know, like, you know what I mean? Because it. It seems to me there's more of a the spectrum, all of it is welcome.
Mm-hmm.
David or anyone else? Is is there anyone who has a preference on the wording there? And I I don't have a strong opinion, so.
Well, uh, yeah, I think that um. That that it could be definitely trimmed back um by um saying something like, um, I do kind of like um. That we that we're pointing out that we're seeing both one hundred percent affordable projects and some that are mixed, so. Um, we can say with both one hundred percent and partially affordable. Uh, onsite, or I'm sorry, with both one hundred percent and partially onsite affordable. Permanently affordable projects, so that we only have projects once we get rid of um. That whole as a percentage of business. So one hundred percent and. Partially. Um. Onside a permanent affordability and we can get rid of the first.
What I would probably say both completely.
You can lose both then.
Yeah.
Nope, there you go.
You see?
I think it works. It's been simplified, but it still gets to the fact that we are pointing out that we're seeing a range.
Could I just suggest that um, we change completely back to a hundred percent and partially to mixed? I like the two words better because when, you know, we talk about projects where it's all. Uh, affordable, it's a hundred percent affordable. If we say completely, it may be like, is it completely affordable, completely affordable to whom? But if the a hundred percent of the units are affordable and we just call it an a hundred percent affordable. Uh, pro- project, people know what that means, so and then the term mixed, you you don't have to really go any further than just call it. It's it's mixed affordability. See if people like that better.
It it missed, it it to me, it meets the the purpose, which is simplify and people can get the sense, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Everybody knows what those terms mean. A major. Said project.
Let's remember that our our audience for this letter is city council, so let's remember what they know and which if they know what we mean, then we're good.
I have a question for the board or possibly if you're um. If you're able to Cindy for you. So in those last two bullets, right before we're Lupita's cursor is. Um, we capitalize the board and then in the next bullet, we do not capitalize the board. What is the city's current style guide? Should we be referring to ourselves as the board proper noun capital B? Throughout or lowercase?
I think it should be capital.
Okay. We'll be formal. We'll make ourselves important.
Um. Yeah, I don't usually capitalize you in minutes, but you can make yourself important.
I think as long as we're consistent, we're we're covered. I just was curious. I I don't remember what the style guide says, so.
Yeah, we use AP, so typically unless it's at the beginning of a sentence, we wouldn't capitalize it.
Yeah, yeah, just like city usually isn't um.
Right.
Or council.
Council, I capitalize.
The one thing we break the rule for, they get to be important. I see, I see.
Yeah, you should think of it, if there is a specificity related to that, then I will be okay. I'll capitalize it. If it was just in your board, like if you're talking about different. Uh, things that doesn't really matter that is a planning board or that, you know. Landmark work or so, or then, yeah, it will be lowercase, it will be very normal. And this kind of distinctions I make on my own head. Um. Because sometimes I do have it.
Just be consistent.
Yeah, I think you should be consistent.
I'm with you, Lupita. I think that when board refers to planning board, it's fine to capitalize it.
Yeah.
I lived in Germany when I was twelve years old and I got imprinted with capitalizing all nouns, so I usually tried. I get a little too carried away with capitalization, but this looks good.
That happens to me too, David, because I'm fairly fluent and if I start writing in German, then switching back to English gets real weird.
Yeah, Germans capitalize more than Donald Trump. He's German, though.
I was gonna say, we can blame, yeah, his ancestors.
His ancestry. Um.
So should we move on to the innovation piece just quickly? You guys want to take a quick look and see there's some suggestions?
Yeah.
I tightened up that first bullet as much as I could. The one thing I thought we might strike, but I also thought there might have been good reasons why it was included. Was the parenthetical about the BC one, BC two zoning, um, and I didn't want to strike it without. The board, you know, getting to talk about it and and arguing for keeping it in or, you know.
Yeah, I. I think I will be fine with it.
I think um Sarah um was very interested in that language because um, in her experience on the use table uh subcommittee. Um, she found that the string of pearls concept was well captured by BC one, BC two.
Gotcha.
And uh, she she actually originally wanted to say just the zones and I I I was the one that pushed for typified by. Because I, because I felt that there are some RBs and some uh transitional businesses in there, so. Uh, you know, so I didn't want to be quite so exclusive, but that's how we kind of got to this.
I think that's, I'm okay with that.
Do you want it as a parenthetical or do you just want it to be typified by BC one, BC two?
Yeah, you can, you can put just a comma after centers and then just make it a clause.
That might be nicer, yeah.
Okay. I don't think you need a comma. I don't think you need a comma.
Let's see. It's a little, this resulted in creative ideas for
I think it gets back to David's point just now, which is, do we mean always or do we mean sometimes? And I think he indicated pretty clearly around sometimes, so I take back my comment, leave the comma. Unless someone wants to.
Yeah.
Reinvite that.
Okay. Leave it or take it out?
Leave it.
It's fine.
Okay. The East Boulder Airplane Working Group is an example.
I'd just like to take out the word very before interested.
And is the word what, the right word? Is interested in the land use proposals that will come from this effort?
Yeah, better.
No, there we go, better.
The land use proposals that will come from this effort.
So here, here what, when we talk about the outcomes, is there any particular kind, just in general outcomes, or is there any one in particular to outcomes that you guys were thinking?
I don't know if we necessarily need to call them out, because the way I think about it, and I'm not sure if it makes sense to list them all, is a lot of the stuff that we just talked about up above. And I don't want to like have to reiterate all the stuff about housing and fifteen minute neighborhoods and.
Who's got the control of the screen right now? Because if we're doing this in real time, we need to finish that edit.
Adding the word that after proposals.
Interested in land use proposals.
I would say in the news proposals that will come.
Come from this effort, or you can say use proposals coming from this effort.
Yeah, or you can take the whole sentence out. You know, I've been kind of wrestling with this because the last sentence about how we're interested. You could say that maybe answering the question, what would we like to build upon? But the first sentence already answers that question, which says that the East Boulder group is an example of how self community planning can help our city achieve better outcomes. And when you have an example that shows us how to create better outcomes, that is something you build upon, so. You know, I could see just, who cares if we're interested in the land use proposals, they're coming to us.
Yeah, that's why we're here, so.
Yeah.
So get rid of this last sentence then? Yeah, because I mean, the other thing, that's what I was thinking also when you talk about better outcomes. Yeah, if I thought if we, you know, help our city achieve or help our city review better proposals and achieve better outcomes, something like that, where you can combine both things. So the second one is about proposals. So hopefully people will see the intentions that we have in the board and the proposal will start being crafted more kind of like once they have a sense of, you know, what the kind of things that the city is accepting and the board promotes, that there will be a clear message of what those proposals should entail or what should include. And therefore it will be easier to achieve the outcomes. Does that mean?
Better than use outcomes.
Right, or help our city evolve land use towards to achieving better outcomes.
Yeah, or help our city draft better code and achieve better outcomes.
Do you want land use in there at all or do you want to drop it?
I like land use.
So Harmon, I think you just said can help our city achieve better code and land use outcomes, or what was, what was?
Help our city draft better code.
Draft is what I wanted, draft better code?
Better code.
Better code and regulations, whatever, I mean, whatever you guys like, but.
And achieve better land use outcomes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and achieve better land use. Land use. See, this is, this is more specific.
Yep. Yeah, because it's, the previous one just said we were interested and that's kind of not as powerful as we want to be. It's great.
Do we lose a space there? Lupita, should there be a space after outcomes before a question? Yeah.
I think, I think it should be.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. So question two, what recent decision change of code or planning trend do you see as, oh, this is the negative one? So planning board is frustrated by slow progress on the city's affordable housing goals and sees a need for additional tools to make progress.
About changing slow progress to the pace of, so that we don't have progress twice. I don't know. We have progress twice in there.
Yep.
Yeah, by the pace of the cities of rural.
I like that, but we need another noun still or something. The slow pace.
On addressing.
My godathesaurus, what's another?
The slow pace of addressing. Movement.
Yeah, movement's pretty good.
Yeah, you could just say movement toward.
Yeah, toward.
Affordable housing goals. So one thing I just want to point out that I don't like is I don't like saying things like planning board is frustrated. And that was part of changing the questions from what makes you happy, what makes you sad, to what we came up with. And so, you know, maybe we, and we've just gone about talking about inequity above in what are we happy with, or, you know, what do we see as particularly positive? We talked about affordable housing projects, so I think it's, it's kind of hard to say we're excited by all these affordable housing projects and then we're frustrated by the slow movement, so, you know, maybe just making it more positive and saying planning board would like to see quicker movement toward our affordable housing goals.
Yeah, would you say something like the board is eager to achieve faster progress? We've done like that, simple, straight to the point, and they will believe us because it's true.
Very nice. Very nice.
Planning board encourages. Do we already discuss, are we planning board or board?
Planning board.
Did we take board out? Did we add planning to, before we had board?
I think we're switching between the two, so it's not always the same thing, but I think it makes sense not to use the same thing always back to back.
Yeah, we can say the plan, oh, planning board and then later the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's the thing to do.
Yeah, the first one under this question can be playing word and then.
I like that.
So here it is, when we were completing this, so planning board is eager to achieve faster progress.
Except we have progress at the end again.
Oh, we changed that, so.
We called it movement or something.
Planning board is eager to accelerate.
Yeah.
Yeah, accelerate, I like that.
Accelerate achievement of affordable housing, our affordable housing goals. Great, looks good.
So instead of saying, kind of like sees a need for and saying something and will prepare or produce or, you know, I mean, how do you propose? Now here, then it becomes, now we say we're gonna do this, now you have to build accountability. Speaking that way means now you're gonna have to do it. To see a need is very different than to say we're gonna do something about it.
So we could say and supports development of additional goals.
Additional tools.
Yeah, of additional tools, right, supports development of additional tools.
So how about here, to accelerate achieving affordable housing goals and developing additional tools?
That's even better.
I think this looks nice.
Yeah, I think you could take supports out now, Lupita.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, because now the acceleration applies to both.
Does the sentence now make it seem too much like planning board would do all of this? I want to make sure that we, we know, we, 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 people know that this is something that we play a role in, but the the city, the council, everybody has to be on board with, so. So maybe eager for boulder too?
Yeah, or eager to see the city accelerate.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, this is our letter to council.
Yeah, so again, you know, you can put the positive spin by saying how you would like to change that into, you know, the progression, whether it is you wanna, you don't necessarily have to say accelerate, but something along those lines. This, you know, the incremental is, I think here, it defines the fact that you think that the changes may be positive, but they're very small, so now maybe you want to talk about more significant as opposed to incremental. More substantive, you know, those kind of words is what I would be looking for, just to give a strength in a way without having to say we're disappointed, it's like, this is kind of like where we would like to do. How about the board encourages the city?
To develop tools?
Yeah.
Using that again from above.
So they said it's incremental, let's talk about what will be our aspirations? For meaningful, significant, radical.
Scale change.
I like words like meaningful or significant, you know, something that, I personally incremental doesn't describe me in terms of what I want to see the city do, but.
Meaningful advancement of, you know, to mean, okay, to develop tools. Of environmental climate change, blah, blah, blah.
I like that, Lupita. And I really like what you just said, Lupita, develop tools for meaningful advancement of and then get rid of change to advance.
Of environmental climate action equity and equity goals.
Add the word for before meaningful, I think.
Yes.
For, yeah. This?
Not, no, before meaningful. To develop tools.
Yes, that's right. I was gonna catch the lady, but that's great. For meaningful advancement of environmental climate action and equity goals, and I think that's it.
And there we do have your Oxford comma for the fans of the Oxford comma.
So it's gonna be, shouldn't it be meaningful advancement towards environmental climate action equity goals? Sure.
Oh, you can advance it all, but I think that it's, the tool is the thing that needs to be doing something. Tools that.
We're gonna start diagramming.
Just say develop tools that will, meaning that will advance, that will effectively, I don't know, and we're good. The point is.
I think it's okay as written.
So how about this last sentence, a more holistic approach should be considered, these challenges are integrally related to land use and CERNI and also reliant transportation of. Okay, so board encourages.
Yeah, I think that we're really talking about desiloing things, having more interdepartmental work on some of these issues. And even maybe cross-board examine how the different boards interact for a more holistic approach, so I think it's probably reads okay for that, but is that what other people read from this?
Here, here is the, here's the little mismatch here. First sentence is active, second sentence is passive. So there is a, is a very tenuous difference, but if there's a way to make that active too, I think that will make it a little bit more forceful again.
How about consider a more holistic approach, colon?
Yeah.
Or just start with these these challenges are integrally related. You could flip the two clauses too, but go back to your idea, David, I kind of stepped in.
So for example, here, the board encourages the city to develop tools for meaningful advancement of environmental climate action and equity goals using a holistic approach that includes blah, blah, blah.
Or the inequity goals, these challenges are integrally related to land use zoning and also land transportation, open space, et cetera. Therefore, a more holistic approach should be used. We could flip the two too.
Yeah, I like that.
I think it's good.
The one, I don't mind keeping them two separate sentences because I think the second the second sentence, it provides a little bit of space to decide how much holistic approach works, whereas the first one says we must get to these advancements of these goals, so I don't mind keeping them a little bit separate.
So I'd take the first clause and drop it behind the second and then start with these challenges are integrally related.
So start with the capital T there, these.
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Either way, yeah.
You're in that these, these challenges, just change it to capital T. Oh, yeah, that's good. There's so many ways to do these things.
Et cetera, I think belongs after open space. If we keep it.
Let me see.
And maybe take out and also rely on and just make it a long list, land use zoning, transportation and open space.
Yeah, I like that. So these challenges are related to land use, comma zoning, comma transportation, comma open space, in which case we maybe don't. Do we capitalize transportation and open space because there's many departments?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think maybe we just take out the et cetera, I don't like that there and just say land use, comma zoning, comma transportation, comma and open space concerns.
Yeah, or and more or something, yeah.
You know, yeah, land use zoning, transportation, open space, you know, concerns, open space and other concerns.
And I don't see that we need to say land use and zoning because land use, because it's duplicative. And I don't see that we need to say land use and zoning because land use, because it's duplicative.
Mm-hmm, I agree with that.
Yeah, land use, comma, transportation. Open space and other concerns.
The holistic language, do we want the holistic language? Like this describes it.
You you said and therefore a more holistic approach is needed.
Thank you.
So if you wanted to do that, it would be comma and therefore a more holistic approach is needed.
So the board encourages the city to develop tools for meaningful advancement of environmental climate action equity goals. The challenges are integrally related to land use, transportation, open space and other concerns, and therefore a more holistic approach is needed. Good.
I like it.
I do too, and can I ask if we're done with this? Can we go back up?
Yes, I want to go back up to the first one as well.
So I'm looking at under innovation, the the first bullet starts, the land use code update has been slower than hoped. And the question, what's negative and why isn't really answered by the first bullet? So maybe if we had a sentence like that, that says, you know, our progress toward, you know, the affordable housing. The affordable housing crisis in Boulder uh seems to be getting worse despite our efforts.
Sorry, which bullet are we on?
The first one. If you look at the question, what recent? No, the under equity and question two.
What recent decision change? Is purely negative and why? Yeah, you're right. We don't really answer the question.
I'm all for changing anything that sounds negative to put it in a more hopeful and um in an optimistic way, because that also puts it on city council as well as us to make it happen.
Right, and I am too, and I think we did that and we changed that first bullet, planning board is eager to accelerate achieving affordable housing goals to make it more positive, but we didn't answer the question, which is what's the negative trend? And the negative trend is affordable housing is still running away from us. We want to accelerate achieving our goals by developing additional tools.
Taking out our emotion words and our negative words, we stopped answering the question.
Right, exactly. So so I looked at the first bullet under innovation and it says the code update's been slower than hoped. And I thought that simple declarative sentence style belongs in the first bullet under equity as well. So if we say, you know, affordable housing continues to be, you know, a seemingly intractable problem or or something like that, affordable housing remains a crisis, period. And then the second sentence is what we have now.
Oh, even the first one you mean, even an equity?
Because right now we're not answering the question like.
I forgot, yeah, I forgot about that part, because if this is supposed to be a negative thing, we do have to say what is negative.
Yeah, we we um I expressed it as frustration initially, uh which didn't seem very useful. But I I agree with Harmon's wording of something very uh declarative. Housing affordability remains.
A crisis.
Yeah, a crisis for.
You know, uh uh you know, one of our greatest problems, whatever.
I would say housing affordability, because affordable housing makes it sound like we're describing.
Remains um um.
Our challenge in Boulder.
Sort of an understatement, though. I kind of like the word crisis, but I know it's really strong, so.
Well, it is. I mean, the cheapest house, single-family house, like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
The work rises shouldn't, do not be afraid of it.
I would like to say have the second sentence say the the planning board is eager for the city to accelerate achievable.
You're afraid it's gonna end up on your work plan somehow?
For the city to accelerate. Yeah, that's that's just what I was trying to say before. I just. I I I want to make it clear that it's it's a citywide.
So say again, I again, David?
Uh just add the words for the city, right where you're pointing, for the city.
You say here for the city?
For the city, yeah, to accelerate achieving affordable housing goals, yeah.
Now Lupita, I'm with you on capitalizing the city when it refers not to the geographical area, but to the actual government. But I've I've been slapped down a couple of years in a row on that, and we haven't been capitalizing city.
Again, I can change it. The I I was and and I was interpreting city as like city council. And you know, the officials, so the people who have the power to change things.
I agree with you.
As opposed to the residents, although I will say, you know, the residents have a lot to say about how we achieve it or don't achieve it.
Well, I I'm prepared to follow the city convention and just make it lowercase all the time, even though I agree with you Lupita, that it it provides descriptiveness that not having a capital C, you know, gives us, but. I've lost twice, so I'm not gonna try anymore.
I say the way I see it is like, I I'm putting this, we are putting this on the residents as well, everybody. Mention in this lowercase C city.
So do we also have that problem with the second bullet, where we no longer state what our negative is before we state our solution?
Well, I I think we're we're. You agree Lupita that we're we're, at least by saying that a more holistic approach is needed, we're we're saying there's a problem. We're not using a holistic enough approach.
And it says these challenges in that second sentence as well. The second sentence really drives home that it is a negative.
Cool, cool, cool.
Thanks for catching that on the first one Harmon, because uh that did ring less than negative.
Okay, so how about the innovation piece? Do we need to, I'll mention the fifteen minute?
I would like to. I think it's a really important.
That is the the spoken standard, right?
Yeah, and we had a pedestrian advisory uh committee that was very active the last couple of years and has given us a lot of very important data on walkability metrics. Um I think that it's something to highlight.
It's an interesting thing. I just read an article just like a couple of days ago about that specifically referred to this fifteen minute walkability and and um in terms of the way of the future. And I was kind of feeling so good about the fact that this is something that is regularly spoken about in our meetings.
When I start ranting, I start going off on ten-minute neighborhoods, because like if you look at how far people actually walk, but it's fifteen is a good goal. Let's aim for fifteen.
I mean, when I lived in Boston, I walked a hell of a lot more than fifteen minutes and I loved it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you'd intentionally walk or do that in New York.
Andy Warhol neighborhood. By the time it's over, you've had your fame, fifteen minutes.
So we're good with that first bullet under innovation?
Are we good, guys, with innovation first bullet?
Yes.
Well, if the pass is any indication, we're not sure we're done with it until we're done with the second bullet.
So we could say along the lines of the simple declarative sentence. There is a lack of housing diversity.
I kind of like keeping under current market and regulatory conditions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just meant take out the we're concerned about.
Yep, that's good.
And then the more should be done, seems like, well, somebody ought to do something. We could try to make that a little more aggressive like we have above.
We must incentivize preservation and development of affordable, blah, blah, blah.
Or Boulder must.
And this was one of the places where I tried to address um the missing middle and like medium housing. So just to highlight that for anyone who who that was a a concern for who wants to see how I did with that.
Yeah, I I really like the way this turned out.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot here.
What do you think of changing it from we must incentivize to Boulder must incentivize? Is that a better way to phrase it, or is we? I think older, it should be older.
Yeah.
I like that better. Or consistency with our with the rest of our.
And again, I see that means is like it should be everybody's goal, that we might might may maybe interview, you know. It's good. Thank you. Yeah, I think you guys were very, you know, very thorough on all the options. In the past year, the city has experienced turnover in planning staff. It is important the morale is maintained. So we do not unnecessarily lose capable.
You could also, I mean, you could get rid of capable and productive and just make it lose people, but.
Yeah, well, you know, because a recent, you know, recent pl- planning staff turnover um has caused morale, something, and then we must support or we correct that, something like that, so you can just kind of say.
I assume that's true, but have we been told that morale? I mean, we're kind of speaking for people there, aren't we?
I know, that's that's the thing. I I I haven't been.
How about um we just point out that that um twenty twenty was an unusually challenging year for city staff?
But the turnover started before.
Don't we reference this report, wasn't it a third-party report, and just say that we encourage continued focus on morale within staff? And look. It it's an everyday thing in every organization, any company. It's not something that you ever get right and then it just stays that way. It's a constant. Focus, it should be, we so without needling it, maybe saying we encourage the continued focus on how to improve or something like that, just a thought.
So, so how about something like that about the turnover? Should be minimized or, you know, cartel, something like that. And then the next thing being supporting uh people, so that doesn't happen, so the way that you support it.
I like where you're going. So Lupita, I'm gonna take a crack. So recent turnover uh in planning staff is evidence of uh an environment, a work environment that needs to be uh improved, that that could use some improvement, right? Something like that. And then you say providing, you know, appreciating staff and providing them with support uh is important so that morale is maintained and we do not unnecessarily lose people, that kind of thing.
So take the last pair uh sentence and put it before the.
Yeah, so if you take providing step, yeah, so start the next sentence with that.
Yeah, I think probably that will do it. Providing staff with support is a priority and that's probably is enough.
So that morale is maintained, or do you want to just get rid of morale?
Or just, you know, making efforts to improve to, you know, to appreciate staff and improve morale, you know. I'd like to see something positive, you know, I make an effort to to appreciate staff.
You know, supporting, you know, supporting staff you know, includes blah, 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 blah. What other thing, what are the specific steps that you think you would, you know, that we can point out that we can do for them?
So appreciating and supporting staff is. Is a priority.
Have with support and appreciation.
I like David's appreciating and supporting staff.
It's more active.
Providing.
Supporting. And appreciating.
Yeah, is a priority.
To be a po- a priority.
Or it should be prioritized so that we do not unnecessarily lose.
And get rid of morale again, do you think, or?
Should be a a a priority, should be prioritized.
Should be prioritized. So that we avoid losing. Uh so that we avoid unnecessarily losing.
Or to avoid.
Yeah, to avoid, yeah.
To avoid unnecessary staff um losses or something.
It's capable and productive is important to put in there because again, there is always going to be turnover and that's part of life and sometimes it happens for reasons that have to happen, but we're trying to avoid the loss of capable product, the the people that we don't want to lose, because.
So here's this, that's what they're necessary. Because the necessary will be people who need to retire. Those are necessary. You can't force people to continue work. But unnecessary is like things that are really not should not happen.
Right, when people are looking for greener grass, I think that um uh necessary ones include family needs to relocate or whatever, you know. So I think unnecessarily is nice because it um indicates that we're talking about losing people who are leaving because they're looking for just a better working situation and not and nothing else. But I mean, we want to get rid of uh the language about those capable, uh productive, I don't know, uh maybe, maybe it's better without that. Or how about unnecessary, to avoid unnecessary loss of talent?
I like that.
And it should be unnecessary, not unnecessarily now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 term is retention, if we wanted to really get.
Yeah, supporting and appreciating stuff to retain talent, you see?
To attract and retain talent.
Yeah, great. Because you know, when people hear in the, you know, in the planning profession, when they hear, you know, boy, you know, come to Boulder and those public hearings are like gladiatorial blood sport, you know. Folk don't come, you don't get as many applicants, despite all the great reasons to be in Boulder.
But then we.
The word on the street.
I like it better.
That's nice. I liked a lot.
I I um actually, um we'll just go back one more time to ask. Is there value to recognizing that this was a very difficult year for our staff? For city staff, uh twenty twenty's been very difficult, but I guess it's been difficult across all.
Well, you know, that's what part of the discussion initially said, that that this kind of trend was happening. So you can say now we stand in twenty twenty, you know, being pandemic year or something like that. If you really want to put that in contact and context, so you say that this is.
Predates the pandemic, though, doesn't it?
That's that's what Lisa mentioned, that's why I thought maybe this is.
Okay. We're fine.
Yeah, it's been a tough year all around.
Think there's an extra space after three colon, maybe. Question three.
Oh.
Basically. Yeah. Yeah.
You can eagle eye woman. Good.
I'm meeting for. Priorities.
So there. Has long recommended, can we just say planning board reiterates the notification requirements for development? I mean, this has been since I've been in the board.
Yeah, I think reiterates. Should include.
I agree with that. The should.
We could just put shall in and hope they copy us.
How about?
Where is it?
Uh, should include. So planning board reiterates the notification grants for development projects should include all residents. And then I was making a joke about law and shoulds and shalls, but it should be should.
So. So how about, since we're already talking about the uh. Notification requirements and the recommendation that there be an ordinance. We just take that part out and it just says planning board reiterates. That. That notification. For development projects should include all residents, owners, renters and business owners.
I think that's because we know what the we know what the.
Yeah, you don't have to spell out.
The rule is.
Mm hmm.
So just.
And even in order to make this change to our land's used code should be prioritized. Yeah.
I think that might be a double space again.
Yep.
You are correct.
And I would take the word notification requirements out right above your cursor.
Yep.
We just want to notify them. The requirements are in the ordinance.
Um, do we need it to say expand community engagement before this?
I don't think so.
Oh, no, that's a, um, I think that's a remnant of how um.
You have broken up into the different subgroups.
There we go.
Topics.
There was an iteration where I think Sarah authored this section and she had um, like, put these headings in. So that's, I think that was a re- a remnant.
And and I would also recommend just changing development to proposed. Just proposed projects.
Yeah, not just development, just any projects though, proposed.
Yeah, if you just change development to proposed right there.
Yeah.
Or just even just projects. Yeah, maybe. Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah. Much better.
Now here's a CIP. We know that everybody knows capital improvement, but but. Is it? Is it okay to use it without introducing the acronym?
No.
Mm hmm. Need to spell it out.
Yeah, capital improvement program.
Yeah. Do you? Do I capitalize or do I?
Yeah, it should be capitalized.
Yep, capital C, capital I, capital P.
Yeah, and then we don't even have to say the acronym since we're never using it again.
Yep.
So, you know, we get hung up on what makes a qualified business. And it's like, you know, it's it's kind of typical. Well, you know, this minority business didn't qualify. And. And what, you know, let the let the program figure out what the qualification. Requirement is and what the call, you know, how to qualify a business, but I think we could just simplify this and say. Direct capital improvement program dollars toward procurement from and contracting with local comma minority owned comma women owned comma and disadvantaged business enterprises period.
Yeah, I and and this is not even a complete sentence.
It is.
I suggest the word qualified without thinking of the technical ramifications, Harmon, because. The. These are research, these are dollars that need to be stewarded and are well and are great intentions shouldn't overcome the need to effectively. Disperse these funds to firms that have the ability to do the work.
Well, I'm not saying throw it around like Jeff Bezos' wife is doing, ex-wife is doing right now. I'm just saying. That this is a dog whistle. You know, if you leave the word qualified in, it's like, here's our out for not giving money to a minority business. And of course, there are going to be qualification requirements in the actual program. I just don't see why we need to say it.
Yeah, and and I I'll tell you for a long time, the using the qualification only when it involves minorities is is a very clear, uh, you know. Way of saying. We only have to make that mention for those people only.
I I kind of.
We're not writing legislation here for one, but in second and other and Harmon, I think your comment was out of line about. Mackenzie and what she's doing, you were demeaning to the research she's done. In the funds that she has dispersed and the history she's making in the nonprofit world.
Oh, I was just amazed that she gave away $4.2 billion in two months. That's a. That's incredible.
Yeah, she put a huge team on it.
Mm hmm.
Well, the the question at hand here regardless is, um, should we take the word qualified out? And I think we should.
Okay, I suggested it for different reasons and I hear everything you're both everyone's saying and I'm I'm fine with that. It wasn't, I didn't intend it the way that uh. It 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 was discussed here, so fine.
I also liked the edit that eliminated the repetition of businesses. I don't remember the exact phrase.
Yeah, so just take out businesses. Every time until you get to the last one and then leave it in.
But have commas in between.
Yep, local comma minority owned comma. Leave that one.
Leave that one.
Take that one, yep. And then we just need a comma after local.
So here. Direct capital improvement programs dollars towards procurement, like I said, should be spent. Or something like that. You you need to put the verb in there because otherwise it is. It is not parallel constructed because the other ones are all full sentences and this one is not. Unless this one is a continued discussion, this is a, you know, that kind of like a. Action.
Yeah, they they are, there are full sentences, but you're correct that it's not parallel. They're just in imperative form. Um.
Boulder should direct capital improvement program.
Also, this is the thing. Yeah, cuz the direct is, okay.
Yeah.
That's the thing. That is the action directed.
That's the action.
Spend.
How about Boulder should direct?
I think it might be okay as written, although I understand.
Now, now I see it that way cuz I was reading direct as, you know, like a an adjective, so to speak. Yeah.
Yeah. How about an action?
Capital improvement program.
How about maybe a more more active action word would be. Uh, or change would be prioritize CIP spending instead of direct dollars, prioritize spending.
There you go.
I like that.
So.
Did I spell this?
There's an I.
Yep. Yep, I. And then if you take spending and move it to where dollars is and just take dollars out.
Prioritize spending capital improvement program. Or cap, I think he meant prioritize capital improvement program spending.
Ah, here we go. That makes sense.
Right, and then. Change towards on.
Say it again?
Just change towards to on, we're spending.
Yeah.
On on procurement from?
Procurement from and attract and contracting with.
Or just say procuring and contracted with local. Yeah, done.
Procurement.
Well, procurement and spending are redundant.
Yeah.
Or prioritize procurement. From. Prioritize capital improvement program procurement from. Local minority, spending, procurement, contracting are all somewhat redundant. Procurement. Is the. All those things.
Yeah, so get rid of spending on.
Just prioritize procurement from.
Right.
Procurement of services from.
Wrong ways. No spending, so now prioritize capital.
Program procurement.
Procurement.
Of services from.
Of service from.
Procurement. Spending.
No, procurement of services from.
Yeah, that's good.
Procurement of services from local.
I think, yeah.
From. Done.
Thanks.
So can we say just goods and services because the procurement's like. A service and the.
Yeah.
Goods is a contract and then we capture both.
Goods, plural.
I have goods. That's right. It's goods.
These are the good services.
There you go.
As opposed to buy bats. Okay.
Work, everyone. Wordsmithing is hard, especially when done by committee. Thank you for doing.
Yeah, but you know, we could, we we're we're converting a lot of it, so it's actually nice and fun.
Lupita and I did this together last year and this is just deja vu. You're really good at it, Lupita.
I agree.
Fun.
Um, great.
So continue discussion around legally sound and equitable ways. To moderate the current trend toward upscale of.
So, you know. To me, like, that's more sort of. You know, dog whistle wiggle word, you know, continue discussion. So we're talking about it. We're just continuing to talk about it and then we're making sure it's legally sound and we're making sure it's equitable. And then we're, you know, just.
So get rid of everything before moderate?
Yeah, moderate the current trend toward upscale housing.
Or address or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I think moderate says let's scale it back.
Mm hmm.
I think that um. And I don't remember for sure if I wrote this, but my in my head I had. Um. That we need to look for whatever tools, additional tools might be available to achieve this. So I don't know if that can be somehow incorporated in a.
That's, I think, under innovation, the third bullet.
Oh, is it?
Remember, we talked about innovation. I remember that.
Great.
Because it is something that needs to really, we need to really work on it. We need to create it.
There we go.
Right now, we don't really have good tools.
Excellent. So no reason to put it in twice. Thank you. So let's see. I think you added the continue to collect data on the influence outflow of industrial users. Um, yeah, from the last discussion, right? That's that looks good.
Yeah, I I had a comment on the next bullet. I I'd suggest we say maintain the area devoted to industrial. Uses and zoning. Um, the way it is now, we just maintain industrial zoning, but it doesn't say anything about how much. Uh, how much? Uh, land is devoted to that.
Well, might we eventually add industrial? I mean, there's concepts around flex industrial and live work and things we don't even have now.
Sure, but in fact, I I mean, that that's fine, but I I think we need to maintain what we have at least.
Well, I think our um. Uh, the the reason we added that second part to the sentence is we would like. To maintain the amount that. We need. And that's why we it should be based on information about how much. So I don't know. I don't know if more or less industrial area is actually called for.
You know, this is you can, you can, you can, you can include it because I think John is on to something. He's talking about the actual physical space. As opposed to zoning, which is more of a code. And and so what he wants. If I interpret what you said, John, is that the the land itself needs to be preserved in that zoning?
That's correct. Um. I mean, my my concern is that it's it's disappearing or diminishing. And uh. It seems to me we need to make a point that we need to maintain it because you don't know in advance. What will develop and what needs may come up, what new. Businesses will start. And so if there's no land at all left that can be devoted to that. Then then we have failed, in my opinion.
It's just that I haven't seen any. I haven't seen any studies to support this narrative that I keep hearing that we're um, that we have a loss of industrial. Land that is causing a crisis of any sort. Um, and that's why I I I'm just a little bit. I I just, I'd like it to be data, data driven. Um, if we think that we're losing industrial. Space, but then um, it could be that those areas are a little underbuilt and that we can still fit more stuff into them. So I I don't know.
Well, I mean, I have, I have no problem with obtaining data and doing some analysis, but in the meantime. Uh, I'm concerned about what's happening.
So I I agree with John and and I'll add a little color to that, like, as much as I also agree with getting the data, you know, some of what we do. Is aesthetic. And, you know, the the fact is, we we've seen it. And, you know, the the city, the industrial property in the city keeps getting pushed further and further out. And, you know, you can't, you can't get a vacuum cleaner repaired at 18th and Pearl anymore. You've got to, to the extent that you can do it, you've got to go in the car. And so. You know, we want a city that has of, you know, variegated uses and an urban fabric. And if every time somebody finds an underutilized lot, it's industrial. The goal is to put a four-story apartment building on it, then we lose that. And so I would go as far as to say, you know, protect our industrial land and zoning. Um, and encourage businesses that make things to locate in Boulder.
I will be fine with that. How did you guys feel about that?
I like, I like that better because it doesn't. Um. I just, I find the area to be focusing on the area to be a little bit odd, but yeah, I I like protect better if that's acceptable to people.
Do we need quotations around that make things? Are we are we just kind of saying we're losing a little colloquialism when we want to call it out?
Yeah, that's how I read it.
But do we want to be cutesy or do we want to just say that make things like think people that make things like?
I don't want to be cutesy.
Oh. I mean, I I think it's either way, but I it's not only making things, it's fixing things and selling things that we actually need.
How about that make and fix things so that they get an idea?
Yeah, I like that.
We're talking about.
There's a lot of software businesses that feel they make things.
That's true.
That is true. You could add the word physical.
Here protect. It doesn't like, do we even need to say our land, our?
No, you can get rid of our.
I think we can get rid of our. Protect industrial land and Sony that encourage.
Encourages.
I I think the reason why it changed was cuz we we had and encourage and now it says that encourage. And I think it's two thoughts. We want to protect the land and encourage the businesses. So I would recommend changing that back to and.
That makes sense to me.
And then maybe you need a comma after zoning since you've got two and clauses.
Well, you could make a comma there, take out the and and then just make it a in a positive all the way to the end. Protect industrial land and zoning comma encourage businesses that make and fix things to locate in Boulder and continue to collect data on the inflow and outflow of industrial users. You could do.
How do you feel, Peter, about that make and fix things, though, in the fact? How do you feel, Peter, about that make and fix things, though, and the fact that that could be read multiple ways?
Well, I think industrial implies it. So I don't even think it's necessary, but if we, I think it hems us in. Again, we're not writing legislation, no one's using this to then hand down some new rule, but if we're stuck on how to wordsmith make and fix things and how it is or isn't going to include or exclude things, I think industrial sums it up. And just like we said before, there will be a process whereby a use is allowed in an industrial zone. That's on what we're here to do.
Is that?
So modifier for businesses then?
Yeah, I don't think business, we should just say encourage businesses because then we uh, could be encouraging like more office buildings and that's not what we're hoping to get.
Right, I'm just wondering, I know we can keep repeating the word industrial, but I'm trying to figure out if it's another modifier that addresses that concern over the make and fix things.
Well, how would we encourage businesses that make and fix things beyond protecting the industrial, you're saying have a whole incentive subsidy program for those businesses to be here? Is that what we're asking, suggesting council to do because it doesn't seem like that's a realistic piece of advice?
So you're saying strike the whole second clause?
I'm just asking what we're trying to, problem we're trying to solve with the make and fix things on top of the industrial.
Well, you could just change it to encourage industrial focused businesses. Uh, there, because our land use code actually does define what industrial is. So we, we may, we use make and fix things to make it colorful, right? And if we want to be more consistent with the land use code, we should just go ahead and use.
Protect industrial land and zoning and, and attract and retain users, those users. Attract and retain industrial workforce, you know, workforce. Um, the, the economy, we're trying to retain, attract and retain the economic base that comes from having and having a manufacturing community. So we want to protect those zoning and those that love it and those that need it and, you know, and those that use it.
So here's the thing, I think that the, the, the piece about businesses that make things, uh, I interpret what Harmon says and I agree with them is that we don't have too many places where you can go, I have one place where I can go and change my, uh, my oil, so to speak. There's a few of them, but there are very few, I lived in LA and Boston, places where you have plenty of places, it's so easy to find these places and are all kinds of odd hours, you can get anything done. In this town, we have very limited options. Um, and so that's how I interpreted, uh, every time that we talk about this, this light industrial, it's about those unusual businesses of which you may have one or two in the whole city. And, and they, they tend to be kind of forgotten because they're not the most common ones, it's not like everybody needs them every day, it's like you need them every once in a while. And that's how I interpreted, so I, that's how I've been reading it, so I don't have a problem with that particular thing.
Well, maybe we go a step further and tie this to our actual sustainability goals around decarbonization and net zero and say that we want to encourage those industrial users that are, I don't know, it's probably too big to say, but look, all the, the oil chain, I mean, if we're going to really have the type of decarbonization in place around mobility, there, there will be a lot less in terms of mechanics, period. So I'm sure these folks already feel marginalized, so.
I hear you, I, I really like that, that kind of thinking because ultimately that's really what we're talking about. Harmon, when you talked about having those things in our city so that we don't have to go driving outside looking for this, you know, services elsewhere, which, you know, it, it, it maybe is too subconscious and we just take it for granted, but that's ultimately what's driving it, right?
Right, so if you look at the bullet above where it talks about encouraging affordable housing to help and then explains why we encourage affordable housing, I think you could say protect and protect industrial land and zoning um, and attract and retain businesses that make and fix things um, to uh, to increase uh, to preserve and increase boulders sustainability and resilience.
Yeah, that's good, to make it a whole community, but I like the resilience piece.
Sustainability and resilience?
Sustainability and resilience, yeah.
Yeah, think like a prepper, you know, thirty years when we can't go over the hill because we'll get shot at, we got to have everything in the valley.
Right, and, and I don't know if people are okay with a semicolon and killing the and, but now the, the last clause really sticks out and doesn't deserve a comma.
Yep. I agree with you.
I like the sentence a lot, can we move on or do people still want to play with it?
I think everybody contributed really important pieces.
I, I was just um, frantically trying to find out if there was a definition in our land use code of industrial and I'm not finding it, so I'm fine.
Okay, good, continue the discussion on community benefits as it relates to affordable commercial space. Um, so what is the discussion?
It's a sticky problem and it's hard to figure out how to do it. Because community benefits is generally about um, providing additional intensity, density, and in some cases height in return for something the community needs, like affordable housing, but affordable commercial space, folks have been having a lot of trouble figuring out how that fits in. You know, which businesses win the lottery and get the cheap rent kind of stuff, so I, usually I, I don't like, you know, continue the discussion, I've already, you know, said about another one, we can't have that, that's too mealy mouthed. But in this case, you know, I don't know if we can take it out because it really is a sticky problem and we're having trouble figuring out how to solve it. Yeah, nice.
Continue to strive to reconcile, we can do better.
Yeah, try to reconcile or just reconcile.
I will just try, but I.
To think about.
Why not continue to try, I will say just, just do it.
Inject, inject for, inject rigor into the community benefits and affordable commercial space conversation.
Or. That sounded good.
But again?
Inject rigor into the community benefits and affordable commercial space discussion.
Nice, like that too.
Boy, that's well done, Peter.
Thank you.
So if we're moving on to innovation, I just wanted to make sure that we um, looked at the email from Sarah.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, did she send an email?
Yes.
She watching us?
Do you, I'm not sure how much more I can concentrate on this without a break, how are, how are folks feeling after three hours?
Yes, it's nine.
I'd be happy to take a break.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then when we come back, what more do we have, just so I can pace myself?
There's really nothing, this is the way out.
Okay.
No way out but through.
On the door.
Four bullets.
Sweet.
Not too much.
So Lupita, can we um, it's nine o'clock, is it?
Hmm hmm, yeah.
Be back at like nine oh five and then jump back on it? All right, thanks.
My boys fed me while I was here earlier, because I. Usually I have to go out there, but now.
Yeah, you turn around, I love it.
Harmon, was the agenda meeting okay without me and Cindy?
It was so fast. Charles wasn't there either. And I was kidding, you know, Charles is, it's the problem, he just talks too much and so, you know, you end up with a too long meeting.
Well, I'll tell you, um, I got on the slopes of snowmass at nine AM and I started tearing down the power line glades all day, they, they were, it was up above the knees of fresh powder.
Ah, that's great.
Oh.
How'd you know to go out there or was it just luck?
It was kind of luck, I have a friend whose family has had this little cabin there forever and uh, he was going to go visit because he can work remote and um, I decided to go, it was his birthday, and then it just started to snow. The Aspen got the most snow the last few days, so it was great.
That's awesome, good for you, so.
Yeah, I figured I just would beg out of an agenda meeting once for once.
Yeah, I mean, there's part of me that's just sitting here wanting to kill you right now.
Yeah, a little angry.
It was, it was a little. December is like that, though, for skiers, you know, it's always such a busy time of the year and you don't know when you're going to be able to get up and you start to get stressed out by the.
Well, this year it's, it's more stressful, like today when uh, Winter Park released their reservation system. Hmm. The servers were so overloaded, you're getting error messages like crazy, you knew half the people in the front range were sitting in front of their computers doing the same thing as you. And uh, and then the system's different, it's, it's a parking reservation system at Copper, it's a person reservation system at Winter Park, so now you're getting confused, do I have to click the, the box for my kid too? You know, you show up and then they say, well, only one of you's got a reservation, so you have to learn the new system. It's tough, this COVID system of skiing is, is hard to learn.
Parts closed, kids.
Yep, you got to stay home, only daddy gets to ski today. Lupita, you're in charge, but you're muted.
Yes, I know, and I just said, I hope you all have a wonderful break.
It was good.
Oh, I just enjoy a big glass of milk, I love that. I'm a happy camper. Okay, so we're down to the last five bullets.
And we have Sarah's email pulled up.
Oh, the email.
Oh yeah, somebody.
I don't see it.
Where do I, I don't think that.
Oh, she may have only sent it, let me forward it to everybody. I, I would just rather have you all be able to see it, so.
We're not in danger of a serial meeting by any of these forwards or what you're about to do?
I'll read it, well, I mean, if I'm revealing the knowledge, okay, here is what Sarah relayed to me. Uh, under item three, innovation, bullets one and two, she suggested combining the, or the idea of combining those two bullets. Um, so that they read something like complete use table and code updates to advance creative land use code changes intended to expand versus housing, et cetera. So basically she felt like maybe bullets one and two were a bit repetitive. And she proposed that there might be a way to combine one and two.
One thing that I've struggled with out of the um, the use table and code, uh, use table review and code updates is um, we, we really were sticking with just the use table section in the code. And so we didn't examine anything with uh, with intensity or anything else, uh, anything outside of that section. So um, yeah, I'd like, I'd like it to, to maybe open it up beyond just, certainly the use table stuff, as we completed, but um, as long as we uh, don't limit it to just the use table section, I think that would be useful because there are some opportunities we may be able to examine that are in uh, intensity as well.
So we could keep evolving, maybe updates, like update land use code and continue to update or update use table. Because I see what she's saying about how there, there is quite a bit of overlap.
I mean, so is that, the way I hear is, is like we're dealing with two different pieces, so maybe we put the different pieces together if they have a similar common goal. To bring the, 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 the tools together and affecting the various outcomes that you want.
Yeah, I, I think that um, that it can be. Yeah, I, I think it, I, I think it's okay to combine it, yeah. Uh, they are pretty similar.
Yeah. But so is, do you want to say complete or you want to update? It put, and the two things that you're talking about are basically the use tables and the code.
How about, how about, so we do have um, use table and code updates that were very specifically in. How about, so we do have use table and code updates that were very specifically in in play that Carl and Andrew presented to us. So we could say complete use table and code updates and examine further land use code updates to advance. So just after a code update, say, and examine further land use code update change or changes. No, further land use changes.
To, yeah.
And then Gabrielle, the first one?
Let me see if everything. Can we put in the second bullet, encourage street activated walkable neighborhoods so we don't lose street activated? Right? Just near the beginning of the second to last line.
You could replace the word walkable with street activated walkable.
Or just put, yeah, right.
Yeah, put street activated before walkable.
Do you feel like diverse housing opportunities is inclusive of affordable housing goals? Or do we need to call it affordable housing goals specifically?
I would call it out specifically. So diverse housing opportunities, affordable housing goals, comma, and then continue on preserve and optimize. I think we should have that in there.
To. So creative changes intended to create affordable housing, comma, expand diverse housing opportunities.
Yep.
So after intended to create affordable housing and, you know, that puts that up front.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
So right there where you were hovering Lupita, so to create.
To create affordable housing?
Yeah.
Oh, no, leave that, leave that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, leave expand, then you're gonna just write create affordable housing, comma, and then keep going.
So adding something at the front, not not right there. So right after intended. Put to create affordable housing.
And then a comma.
Comma.
And then take out that too. Yep, perfect.
We have creative than create. I don't know if that bothers anyone.
Innovative changes. I mean, it is under innovation.
All changes are innovative, are they not? Maybe not.
Sometimes you just change back to the same old way.
Whippersnappers and their fancy new music.
Changes leading to affordable housing span. Okay, no.
I think generate sign or create, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, you're saying this is what your lead to affordable housing produce.
How about generate more?
Mm hmm.
Affordable housing. Yeah.
Question on capitalization.
Additional.
Intended to increase affordable housing?
Actually, still like generate more affordable housing.
Yeah.
I like it.
Do we need the capitalizations that we have in this sentence?
Well, and use definitely should be lowercase.
Yeah.
I would say use table and code updates can be all lowercase.
Okay.
And I think we're ready to take away the first bullet then.
Yeah.
I think that was a good a good catch by Sarah. I think there were, yeah.
Use table, do I?
Lowercase.
Lowercase too.
Have you ever, I was gonna say, there's a little tool you can use. Have you ever tried that tool that has the big A that goes to the little a up on the bars? So if you if you highlight.
I am going to use it right now.
Check it out.
Ah.
Change case and then just hit lowercase. Oh, it's just that way. And then you could do the same thing by highlighting both land and use and land use further down the sentence.
Does it work if you use caps lock in the first sentence? Are there two? Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Yeah, it does the whole.
You can do the whole thing.
I can't.
Yeah, you can grab as much stuff as you want.
Yeah. Does it work on caps lock or could it not handle caps lock?
Oh, that's cool.
I don't know. I mean, I, this isn't the same as it works in Word, but it's close.
Up in the very first sentence, under the first bullet, Lupita, land use is still capitalized.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Let's do that. But you know, I'm gonna try something even newer because I wanna know what a shortcut is. Is it a shortcut? No, it doesn't.
Oh, yeah, does it have a key like a shortcut?
No, it doesn't. Well, that's okay. I learned a new thing. Thank you, Harmon.
You're welcome. Word, if you're in Word, the regular Word, it's got like capitalize the first word of the sentence. All caps, lowercase. There there are a few options.
Well, that was really useful. Now that was worth all the time I've spent tonight.
Complete the use table and code updates and examine for the land use changes to advance greater changes. Too many changes here.
Yeah, right. That's right.
To advance improvement.
Could you just delete that? Could we just say to advance more affordable housing?
You can take all of it out. Further land use changes that will generate.
Yeah, right. Yeah, like that, Peter.
Good. Or Simone Peter. I'm not flowery. I'm persimmonious.
This is where a missing middle still gets mentioned, but it's under innovation.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah, very good.
Well, that one, could we just add missing middle of the first bullet?
I know. I was wondering about that too, because we talk about affordable diverse housing types. We talk about the use table and stuff. I was wondering if we can.
Yeah, I mean, you could just say, so.
Expand diverse housing opportunities, including the missing middle.
Or and and address the missing middle. Yeah, like that, right in that little clause right there. In diverse housing opportunities, including the missing middle, something like that. What do you think, Lisa?
Yeah, I like that.
Where?
So on the first bullet.
Yeah.
Where it says expand diverse housing opportunities.
Yeah.
Add including the missing middle. And I don't know if it, I guess quotations are fine. And then we can delete the whole second bullet.
Yeah, beautiful.
Still two pages, which apparently is the requirement.
Yeah, I'm almost thinking I kind of reduced the margins and and you could actually make the margins bigger again.
Yeah, where are they at currently?
I think Cindy said that.
The margins.
So so guys, I think Cindy said that, you know, as long as we gave her your text, she would take care of the format.
I'll take care of the format. And remember, I still have to put signatures and and letterhead and everything on this.
Okay.
Two pages, so I need some room at the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just in case, let me select all and look at this. Yeah, it is a normal all of it. That's usually, that's the one.
I made the, I think I made the headers like eleven or twelve, I don't remember. And then I made the body.
I'll I'll make it all fit.
So we're down to the last bullet.
Mm hmm.
I think I kind of like the bullet, the way it is. Let's see.
Do we need the third bullet under the third bullet?
So the the only thing in the second bullet that we may want to get rid of is telling council to put it in the work plan. Because the nature of the in neighborhood infill project was that it needed a willing neighborhood. And council can't impose that. So if we just say prioritize a neighborhood infill project as outlined in the major update and put a period there and take off the for the 2021 work plan, I think that's more appropriate.
I think it's also more realistic.
Twenty twenty one is gonna be a year of recovery, I think, and survival, not doing.
There's the East Boulder Plan isn't moving ahead quite as fast as one might hope, so.
Yeah, I know. That is the wording we put in our motion, but.
So do you really need to say what appropriate? Isn't there the kind of like understood? You wouldn't be pushing it when it's not.
Yeah.
I think it's unnecessary to say that.
Yeah, I like taking that out. But I do question that third one. Let's see, considering.
Maybe changing ensure to foment or encourage. I don't know if you can ever ensure.
Yeah, well, people certainly, even if you have a great process, aren't necessarily gonna think it is. Um.
Cultivate.
Or support cultivate, you know, something like.
I think it's good.
I thought foment was great.
That's my word, man. I am a huge man.
I don't know what foment means.
Are we gonna radicalize some folks?
I have a hat that says fomenter, a baseball cap, black. Because I used the word foment so many times that this attorney, when I was a planner, had the hat made and gave it to me.
Yeah, I don't know if the third bullet is really, is this a correct subcommittee planning process? Thing here, we've already talked about working on that.
I just wonder, maybe it just says and consider other subcommittee planning processes and we get rid of the particularly centered on opportunities. Or maybe we don't. I I just, I I think what I'm reacting to is how repetitive that language is. I think we've had it two or three times above, including in the first bullet. Maybe it needs to be repeated.
Well, I just am, I'm questioning where what this, it's funny because I don't remember seeing this. I don't know why. And it is in the draft that Sarah and I submitted two weeks ago, but what are we asking to do here? If we're, we have community outreach processes to deal with, you know, things that aren't subcommunity planning. Are we, are we asking to apply heavy duty kind of subcommunity planning processes to things that aren't subcommunities? I don't quite know what we're doing here. And I I find that.
Diagonal Plaza is not a subcommunity.
No, it's not.
That would be an area plan, right?
Yeah. RPD almost.
So you if you can think of it, you know, what would the action and then what would be the examples? Is that kind of like it is? Oh, they're all very different fact, in different actions are you trying to do?
I think you could say, first of all, I'd say take out the continue because you know, just do it, right? Utilize. You know, use utilizes a kind of a big word that you don't need. You could just say use area and subcommunity planning.
Yeah.
Did subcommunity planning be capitalized?
I think in this case it works. I mean, it's a it's a process, as is area planning.
Can you say it's something that tells it meaningful?
And then we could actually, we could actually is there a way we could get around whether it's area or subcommunity planning that would result? In certainly, East Boulder is a subcommunity planning process.
Yeah, so maybe just say in East Boulder, Gun Barrel and Diagonal Plaza.
How about subcommunity or area plans for Gun Barrel and Diagonal Plaza? Subcommunity or area plans.
I'm just wondering if we need to call it out in the bullets below if we have it in the first.
If you can put it on one sentence, if you can find out what they have in common, that's what I'm, again. If you're putting the actions together and then the instances, the examples at the end.
Like use area and or subcommunity planning to cultivate meaningful and effective community engagement, engagement and coherent area planning in East Boulder, Gun Barrel and the Diagonal Plaza.
Yes, you could just keep put it in line there. East Boulder, Gun Barrel and the Diagonal Plaza.
Yeah, and maybe we split them into. Yeah, no, that works. And then just get rid of subcommunity playing process after East Boulder.
Yeah, just, oops. Yep.
The Diagonal Plaza.
What is it, Dag? Oh.
Dag.
Gun Barrel. And I would get rid of when economically feasible. I mean, I think they know that, right?
Yeah, we we know that.
I would leave the consider other, yeah, okay, so use area and or subcommunity planning to hold to meaningful and effective community engagement and coherent area planning. So that and after and effective community engagement.
I'd take the word use out because that's a word that has other meanings and everything else we're saying and go with like employ or
Yeah, employ.
leverage or activate.
Let's go with employ.
Employ area and or subcommunity planning to cultivate meaningful and effective community engagement and coherent air planning in East Boulder, Gun Barrel and the Diagonal Plaza? Shouldn't it be the?
Yeah, sure. And and I would take out, after coherent, I would take out area.
Yeah, because we said before.
Yeah, I like that. Why doesn't it like the spelling of Gun Barrel?
It doesn't like that it's a proper noun, actually, is what it's mad about, I think. Or is Gun Barrel, yeah, I want to.
Expects to words. This is Microsoft for you.
Yeah, you know.
He doesn't like the spelling of my name oftentimes.
Is it true that they're bringing Clippy back? Because I really hate that thing. Um, okay.
On PC where it's like Gun Barrel.
No name.
At least it's not Salida. Or Buñivista.
Buñivista.
Saliva, as my eight year old called it.
Called it.
We're staying in saliva.
Oh, I love when kids say things like that. I just love it. I hope you laugh every time he says.
Again, my question is, and maybe I'm just being too nitpicky, but the very first full bullet, we talk about revitalize the neighborhood, city's neighborhood centers typically zone BC one and BC two. And then we say exactly the same thing down here, which maybe is necessary, but.
I just don't know why this bullet is necessary right now.
This one, you may not need it.
I I really don't understand why we're asking the city to consider subcommittee planning processes for things that we do with different ways.
Yeah, it it doesn't seem appropriate, actually.
No, no. And we already, we already talked about that. First bullet. Yeah.
Sub sentences, people?
Yeah, kill it.
And then the, just turn that out dent, out dent that bullet.
Bring it up a level.
Yeah, you have to do that by.
Do we end by telling them to run on the issues in the next election cycle?
Oh, that was a good way to do it. I was.
Embarrass us.
Cool. I think we left Cindy a fair amount of space now.
Yeah.
Plenty.
Well, we can all use the new Trump. Well, we can all use new Trump size, Trump size signatures.
John Hancock. Um, okay, should we read back through it one time from the top?
Sure.
Even if we don't do it aloud, maybe just each read through.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. Don't scroll too fast on this, Lupita.
Oh, the challenging years in the first sentence. Yay.
We also have city capitalized up top if we want to be consistent throughout.
Fix that. Definitely.
Which one?
Second line in serving the city, city should be lowercase.
I'm ready.
You know, I I I do have one comment on under innovation, the second bullet. The East Boulder Area Planning Working Group is an example of how subcommunity planning can help our city. I think it it's why it's more accurate to say it'll achieve better land use outcomes, but I'm not sure it's going to be drafting better code. I'm not sure it's going to be drafting any code.
I think that's a good point. I think we can get rid of draft better code.
Yeah, we don't want coders in our town anyway. We want people who make things.
Unless you guys are gonna come up with a new, I mean, maybe you'll come up with a new zone, this zone.
Peter, Peter Vitale, we don't want coders.
We're gonna like sea setting, David, like we might create like a whole new like libertarian community in East Boulder.
It'll be a zone specifically for middle income housing. It can't go above, can't go above.
Sign a flag for that.
Thousand dollars.
Is that working group, is that the name? Exactly as it is?
It's a pretty long name.
It's it's the East Area Subcom- East Area, East Boulder Area Subcommunity Plan Working Group.
Oh, it's longer than.
Even longer? Let's pretend we never heard that.
Well, I don't know what we're talking about, so.
David, I like the idea.
Why don't we make it right and just so the use review, the use table review subcommittee, subcommittees lowercase. So why don't we just do the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan? All capital instead of area planning, write subcommunity plan in the second bullet down, the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan. Capital S, capital P.
Is it a subcommunity area plan or a subcommunity plan?
It's a subcommunity plan.
Yeah.
Right. And then lowercase, leave working group, but make it lowercase.
That is consistent with the webpage on the city. Very good.
All right.
I will say it's an example how so many planning can help our. So is 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 the existence of the working group what is going to? Is the example, is is that is what is going to make it or is what the committee is going to do? That is how you're gonna achieve the outcomes.
What it's going.
Because I will say, I would probably go for more like the East Boulder Subcommittee Plan Working Group will exemplify how to blah, blah, blah.
I think that's very, very good.
Because the committee is gonna do the work.
Yeah, you're completely right. There is going to be output, so we'll exemplify how. Instead of it as an example of how. I love how we've subtly turned question two into somewhat positive language, but still maintained negativity.
Yay. This is, I'm good with with this whole page now.
Me too.
Yeah.
Are we gonna comment?
Can you scroll up just to.
As they come. Because cities have morale support.
Could you repeat that, Peter?
The second sentence of the last bullet point on question two.
Yes.
Yes. Um, the second sentence, I feel like the meat of that is is at the end. And really what it could say instead at the end, instead of starting with supporting, could say prioritizing the attraction and retention of top talent should be a focus. I don't need to rewordsmith it, but supporting and appreciating staff is secondary to attracting and retaining.
Prioritize the support and, you know, prioritize supporting and appreciating staff.
No. Prioritize attracting and retaining talent by any means necessary. Whether it's supporting, appreciating, getting my cookies, pat on the back, raises, I don't care.
They want raises, that's.
Attract and retain top talent. Full stop. Go, do it. That's your job. That's the city chat is like that is whatever you do, you do that. That's what leadership does. Attract, like prioritize.
Do we even need prioritize?
No, I just say attract and retain top talent.
Yeah, but that's not talking about how you do it. You know, I think the point we're trying to make is that staff needs to be supported and appreciated. And it's not happening. You know, there's difference between attracting a bunch of talent and supporting them and appreciating them and attract.
Retaining them.
I think, yeah, I think we could turn it into two sentences. We could say prioritize, well, now now everything's changed so much.
Retention is the key word here because that's what, that's what makes great organizations is the retention of great talent. You're right, you can attract talent with a lot of promises. And if you don't walk the walk and support your staff and your team and appreciate them, they're gonna leave. So why do people not leave? It's because their their needs are being met on a variety of levels. So it just in terms of really nailing down, it's detracting and retaining the top talent. And yes, supporting, appreciating are one of the tool or some of the tools in the toolbox of how you do that. But I would just hate it to be lost at the end of.
I I was, I was actually thinking we could do that, Peter, by separating it into two very short sentences. One would be something like appreciating staff, uh, uh, supporting and appreciating the staff should be prioritized, period. And then a, an excellent work environment serves to attract and retain the best talent. Remember, we have two concepts there.
Yeah, remember, we're in the negative. We're in question two. So that it starts with recent turnover in staff is evidence of a work environment.
That's the negative part.
That's the negative part. And we provide a prescription. So, you know, I'm, I'm not liking where this is going. I, you know, I think it was pretty good the way it was. Um, the only change I would recommend is that we're not just losing planners. And there are different parts of planning and development services that work together. There are engineers there too, people in building. So, you know, I think maybe we change the bullet or the the heading. Take out city planning and just have staff morale slash support. And then recent turnover in planning and development services staff. So that we capture all the people who usually make presentations to us, not just the planning department.
I agree. It's it shouldn't be focused on just planning. We deal with.
I'm gonna get back to where we were and I'm just doing the real force back thinking that is the next thing, but I think we did so much.
That's fine. I just want to throw it out there. It's not key. Let's go to question three.
Yeah, because I think I think what what we were saying is that we we all agree that we need to retain these people and the way that we support them, I think is 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 or at least the way we do that is by providing the support and the other thing is the appreciating piece. Uh, which I think that's kind of like the actions. Like the details on how you're planning to do it. And the outcomes is the the actual retaining of them.
So, yeah, that's why I was actually, and now that we're back to this, I'll I'll repeat my suggestion that we could, if we split it into two sentences, then we can really capture Peter's point, I think. We could say supporting and appreciating staff should be prioritized, period. Uh, an outstanding work environment helps attract and retain the best talent. In the second sentence.
I like that.
It what is?
An outstanding work environment serves to attract and retain the best talent.
It it is sad that we're ranked, whether it's real or not, as the best place to live, happiest place, all these different things. The boldest planning decisions ever made, all these different things. We should be equally outstanding and in the sta- in staff and how we how we do this. I know that in the sky approach, but it's an aspiration.
I get it.
Yeah, that's what I was recommending because I thought that we were trying to cram two different two different concepts together into that sentence. And so now that we've kind of made two kind of little points.
Yeah, because I think I think that then it that the job is to be done in the environment, that the creation of the environment could do so for this.
So my suggestion on staff is either we just take out the word planning and and just take out city as well, just staff morale and support. And then in the body of the bullet, either just take out the word planning again and just say staff because they know what kind of which staff presents to us or call out planning and development services staff. But I I'm fine with just calling it staff.
I think that's fine. Can we scroll up a little bit on to the beginning of question two before we move to question three?
I can even go all the way to include innovate, all of the innovation.
A little bit further, I want to see the beginning of equity. I think we're good. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, it's good.
Great.
I feel like the semicolon's a little weird.
Like a cousin of the actual comma, the weird semicolon.
Where? I actually really like semicolons. Something about it in the fourth bullet under equity. Protect industrial land and zoning, attract and retain businesses that make and fix things to support the city's sustainability and resilience. Continue to collect data on the inflow and outflow of industrial users.
I think the semicolon gets less weird if you take out the first comma.
Why?
Protect industrial land and zoning.
You can just separate, make two sentences. I don't think it's a problem with that.
I'm just, I was just saying.
Done.
That looks good.
We're good.
But I, but the the thing that strikes me as weird is the first comma. I think it just needs to be an and.
Protect industrial land and zoning and attract and retain businesses that make and fix things that put the city's sustainability and resilience. Continue to collect data on the inflow and outflow of industrial users. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, these are making throw a couple Hemingway sentences in there like that. Good.
Actually, if you want to make it Hemingway, just put a period there and a capital A attract.
I was thinking we should do Faulkner.
Kerouac, Kerouac Faulkner.
Yeah, right there where the comma is after zoning, delete the comma and instead write and. Good.
You know, the other thing in this, this is another place where you can just use a semicolon because the the two actions are similar and 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 the first piece, protect industrial land and zoning is a complete sentence. And the second one is attract and retain businesses, blah, 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 blah. It's another complete sentences.
Why not just make it a complete sentence? And get rid of that.
No, because if you want to separate it in that way, so that is clear.
Yeah, I I like it better because I don't like the two ends on either side of zoning like that.
Yeah, that's 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 I I concur.
Yeah, so the real home for the semicolon is after zoning. No, no, not there, Lupita, the next end.
Yeah, there you go.
And then get rid of and that's.
Yep, perfect. And and I just want to point out that the first bullet under equity is a little bit pissy. Like we've been telling you this for years.
Well, that's what I think Sandy to reiterate is. A long time, which is what it initially said.
I'm trying to remember who who proposed that, uh.
I did. I I have gone back and looked at minutes for years and years of all our meetings where we proposed this and we have proposed it so many times.
Yeah, I've been, I've been proposing the CIP spending longer than that and I didn't get pissy about it. I think maybe just say notification for proposed projects should include all residents. And that's a lot nicer to city council.
Okay.
So just, yeah.
Just say it like it is.
Thank you for keeping us from being pissy.
Yeah, we could just put, we could put just saying at the.
How about just, just J S? And they won't know what it means.
They're gonna come back shaking with us, making sure that we're not cussing anybody.
John Smith? Oh, God.
That's Joseph Smith to us Mormons.
No, you know what they're gonna think? They're gonna think that we made our teenage kids write it and there is some acronym that the kids are texting on and we just don't know what it means.
Teenage kids, I'd be so proud.
Well, actually, I am the only one.
Well, someone is nailing this to the door of the council building. The front door that you can't find because it's not there.
There, there used to be one. Separate conversation. All right. Uh, separate conversation. All right.
That's good.
I think it's nice, um, to, you know, that we get a chance once a year to kind of do this general direction.
Yeah. I like how, you know, we agree on things. I really, I really love this sort of exercise.
But one thing that's neat about it is just how much we disagreed when, when we started and, you know, and it's been getting, you know, I think the process worked really well this year.
Yeah, I, I think so also.
Yeah.
All right.
Ready to save and hit send to, um,
I've been saving and send it to Cindy and everybody else as a copy. Or just let her clean it up and then send it back.
Yes, Cindy.
Only to Cindy.
I sent it to me and then I'll do everything I need to do to it and I'll send it to you out tomorrow, the final with the letterhead and everything. Um, I'll send it first thing in the morning because I'm actually taking tomorrow off, but I'll send this out tomorrow.
But it's due tomorrow, right?
It is due tomorrow. Yeah.
Well, I'll send it right now.
Send it to me and then I'm it. I'll just take care of it in the morning.
Great. Thanks, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get out of here. I don't know how to move this stuff out of the way so I can say, oh, stop sharing from up here.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks, everybody for hanging in there. And, um, that, that was really a team effort. I think Lupita did an amazing job, um, driving and being the editor in chief. And I want to, you know, shout out to the first two teams of editors, to David and Sarah and to Lisa and Peter for getting us there. Um, you know, we've never had such a, and I think it was a really great process where, you know, we came up with things that we could all, um, get behind and sign on to, and then we honed it down. And, um, and everybody contributed equally tonight, and it was just one of the, one of the better um, cooperative planning board activities I've ever been part of in five years. And, and so I congratulate everyone and thank uh, Steph for hanging in there while we did all of that work. So, uh, thanks to everyone. That was terrific. Does anybody else want to debrief a little bit about that?
I think you did a nice job, uh, shepherding it along. Thanks.
Everybody did great, human and all. I wish you the best winter break that you can have within the circumstances. But there is light coming our way.
Uh, there will be, the January seventh meeting has been canceled.
More light now.
Merry Christmas. So
And last night of Hanukkah, for anyone celebrating, I think.
And happy Hanukkah.
Yeah, happy Hanukkah.
So, um, we won't see you for a month.
Okay, well, enjoy your break. Um, do we have any, uh, any, um, items from New Charles or from Hella, from city manager, city attorney?
You know, nothing of substance for me, but just wanted to, you know, this being the last meeting of the year, just wanted to thank the board again for their participation and service. It's been another very busy year and your thoughtfulness and a lot of complex applications and a challenging environment, um, and for your flexibility and responsiveness and going virtual this year. Um, so thanks very much, and I, I hope everybody has a restful, uh, break, and we'll see you guys in 2021. And of course, thank you so much to Cindy and to Gene Gatz for, you know, again, really making all of this possible and keeping, um, you know, our ability to actually do regular business. So thank you guys so much.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Hella, anything from the attorney?
Nothing from the attorney's office, but I echo Charles' thoughts and things, and wish you all, uh, happy holidays.
To you too.
Happy Christmas.
Yes, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Wonderful to see everybody. We'll see you in a month, and, uh, I'm just gonna adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Be safe. Stay healthy and safe.
To.